The town respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional heritage to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, I'd like to call today's committee and the whole meeting for August 12th, 2025. First order of business is adoption of the agenda. Counselor, committee, are there any changes to the agenda? So nothing from committee administration? Are there any changes to the agenda?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Anderson?
Move the way that the agenda is presented.
Thank you, Anderson. Maybe we have a motion to have dealt as presented, if you could please hold now. And that is carried out honestly. Thank you, everyone. Community announcements. I don't believe we have any community announcements today. Moving on to delegations, I believe we have no delegations today. Thank you. Presentations again then. Okay. So that brings us to item 6.1, reports from administration. Butan Land Senior Housing Concept Review. CEO?
To Chair, I will turn this over to Mr. Russo and our presenters.
Yeah. Good evening, committee, and good evening to all our listeners and to those that are going to co-present. Tonight, I wish out before you is that on February the 4th, this year 2025, administration brought forward a report whereby we requested to look at the Butan Lands as a senior campus of care as to what options that we have. And one of the options that we brought forward at the time was the life lease option that we discussed with council. There was a lot of information that we needed to dig into, and with that, we also asked about a $50,000 contribution for us to be able to dig into that. That emanated into us then having a housing consultant of which is present tonight with us. On my right hand side, I have Mr. Ravi Sankaranam. On the screen, I have Derek Reed Weiss and Tara Weiss that is going to assist in walking us through this presentation. I just want to preface this before I hand it over to the presenter, to Mr. Sankaranam. And we were also fortunate during this time between February the 4th to August the 12th. You may say that's a long time, but there was a lot of digging in, a lot of research that we've done. At the same time, a grant came available up to $50,000 that has helped us to get to this evening and will help us to pull out even further needs that would emanate out of tonight's conversation. So if we did not get the $50,000, we got $35,000, which was still sufficient for us to say the $50,000 that council granted us plus the $35,000 is going to take us over the line to bring quite a bit of depth to this conversation tonight. One of the other options that we looked at was is to say, if the life lease is not the potential, then what other options are there? And then what are the financial commitments in terms of what would the model look like? What type of cost aspects are attached to this? So you'll see from tonight's presentation that it's quite lengthy. Some slides we're going to really get into depth. Some we are going to skim over, but it doesn't mean you can't stop us. So I want you to feel free to stop us at any time. It's an interactive conversation and clarity is the most important thing that I think all councillors. We have worked on this for several months. You are seeing it within an hour and a half. So we want you to get the depth of this tonight. So with that, I will hand you over to Mr. Ravi Sankaranam to harness the presentation. And so over to you, Ravi.
Good afternoon, committee. My name is Ravi Sankaranam. And I'm joined today by Derek and Tara Weiss, which you can see on screen, but I promise they are there. So very happy to be here. Beautiful place to go from air dream to here. Beautiful setting mountains. So very happy to be here. So let's get on to the agenda. So as Winston said, there are about 50 odd slides that we have today. Spent in a lot of work in getting this together. I will run through them and pause at certain slides, but there are some slides that are just informational. So but please, I want this presentation to be more interactive and conversational. So if you have any questions, you are happy to answer as we go through. So the agenda today, you see that we have what our life lease findings, this was the first part of a work that we started off with. So we will discuss about that, all the research and the scenarios we tested and, you know, some of the case studies that we did. That is the second item where we talk about some of the examples of life lease projects that have been successful in Canada and specifically in Alberta. Within that, we will go through the specific case study of Cheris Village where my team, Derek and Tara, had the opportunity to visit and find out more about how they are working and how, you know, what are the challenges around it, what are the successes around it? So we'll go into that in a bit of depth. Then we'll talk about the concept development and townhouse options. So this is originally when we started with life lease, we said we were gonna start testing on a 10-unit townhouse type of project, different scales, small and large scale. And that emanated into what will be fit on the site, not just the townhouses, just to see the massing of the site that is going to enter. You'll see like three different options that we'll go through. And then we'll delve into the particular townhouse options that we modeled for life leases and other alternative models as we go through, which is item number four, which is if not life lease, what else is there in terms of in the current funding landscape? And specifically from our funding financing and operational forms scenario. And then to close, we will go through the recommendations and next steps. So that will form our presentation for today. I will try to pace myself, but if I'm going too fast, I'll ask you to, you know, go back to a particular slide and ask a question to this. I'm more than happy to do that. Before I start, Derek or Tara, did you want to add anything?
Um, no, we certainly will interject when we talk about Alberta examples and also some similar work possibly that we have done in Saskatchewan on review with life leases. But really, we will see where the conversation evolves to on what the direction of council thinks the best appropriate approach is for the site as a whole.
Awesome. So let's dive right in. So just if you can bring the press. Okay, there it is. So this is the proposed site, just to provide context. So where we are, it's in close proximity with the High Valley Senior Lodge. And I'm told there is Inter Jasper Housing that's going to be coming on the south. Don't know that yet myself, but it is a good area to build campus of care models, not just seniors. But eventually, you know, once we get to the housing needs assessment part, which Winston mentioned briefly early on, will determine what kind of housing is most appropriate and has high demand for. But this is just to kind of set up, set ourselves up today. Okay, this is the proposed site. And then we want to the next one. So here we'll talk about engagement a little bit. So when we started this work, the request would take focus to develop a high-level operational model for a 10-unit life lease model. That was, that's how we started. So that was to look at how much equity would be required daily through life lease models and, you know, the related debt financing. Along the way, we were also asked to look at, you know, research and examples as to where else is it successful, how are they operating? And so that formed a part of our work. And then while reviewing all the challenges which we'll go through in detail and look at rest of the challenges, we were asked to look into alternate housing models as to what else would work. So that's essentially the background of our engagement. This license focuses on that. So next we will go to the life lease findings. So what exactly is a life lease? So this is, this is a housing tenure model where residents pay an upper amount, which we call the entrance fees, to live in the, it's a right to occupy, not to not own the unit. So they'll stay for a number of years and pay some monthly fees for that to offer stable wage and spring living. Typically designed for older adults, you know, and all the ends we collected helps the developer or the builder build the project. On paper, it is pretty straightforward, but as we will see later, that their financial operational realities may be challenging in today's market and funding environment. So that's essentially. Now we go into, there's a little bit of detail as I mentioned earlier, some slice of information. So this, this is one of them. So there are several type of life leases available in terms of fixed value, market value leases, price index leases. But for the purpose of the work, we use a fixed value or no gain, which is where the ownership entity, which is the developer, will purchase it back eventually and return the entrance fees or to to the tenant and obviously less the administrative expenses. So this, the property does not very appreciate in this. Whatever you pay to get back minus the administration fee. So that's what we have modeled against. So a lot of information around various types of life lease models, but this is what we've picked. These are some additional details again for life leases. Good to kind of look at for a minute, keep in mind because it may generate questions later on as you go through some of the risks and challenges that we'll talk about. One important point also that our research tells us that typically all these life lease models work in a in a faith-based setting where people are like-minded or, you know, working cohesively. So that is what we've observed in our research. But we'll see, when we see our example of the Cheris Village, it is one such. So now we'll go into the examples of life lease projects. So these are some examples that you see, as I said, Cheris Village is one that he studied deeply and visited Tara. Derek and Tara visited them and learned a lot as to what their successes were and what their challenges were. And then we have others where we have the Bethany Group and Camrose from Oka Housing Foundation does some of it. Chalane, Calgary and Cabin of Living Calgary, they're also, they're more like law style, not like independent living. But when we go on to the next slide, you will see as to, you know, how how different these are. They do have some commonalities which we'll talk about. So next slide. So this is, these are the examples of the successful life lease models that are operating out there. And so at this point, I ask Derek and Tara to talk about their experience with Cheris Village.
Sure. So not just Cheris Village. Some previous research programs that are run by the Saskatchewan government. And of course, what's been happening in Alberta, life leases, I wonder why there hasn't been greater pickup on life leases. Cheris Village, the reason why it is the most interesting, it's the most comparable to what you might want to do. It's an independent living project. It was geared at seniors. Profit, it's not a cooperative, but they're not out there. They were just trying to build a community for one that didn't exist. It had a large landmass like what you have. They were able to put in a life lease, I'll call it an apartment block, but it was quite lovely. You know, it was full of facilities that were oriented to retirement. And it also had a combination of various sized homes. Right now, they've developed, I'd say about 30 housing units combined and they're, and they build them essentially one at a time or two at a time because they're duplexes, and they built the apartment building first. Some of the things that Ravi was alluding to, one of the biggest challenges has been finding a cohesive group because it's very difficult from a legal standpoint and a trust standpoint to get a life lease project going. Who's the money? Who's the owner? That sort of thing. We had the opportunity to also talk with the lawyer that was part of the project and the challenges he had working to get it going, and he also had familiarity on many other life lease projects. So we were taking his information, not just the ownership group, much more seriously and considered relative to his experience. He was out of B C. I just turned this to Tara. She had many disconversations.
With that piece of it, what, like life leases actually are a Manitoba invention from the Mennonite community. And when we spoke to a number of operators, it became quite clear that you need some sort of glue, whether that is, I mean, faith-based or some sort of other identifiable characteristic that kind of means you're coming from the same perspective. Otherwise, it's more difficult to build on it. And that has to do with the fact that construction gets risky at the outset. And the participants and the life lease holders in the first round are putting up a lot of money. Is, is the bottom line on that?
It's a bit of a trust.
So it's a trust piece and it's easier to build trust when you're all alike. It's essentially the message we were getting from, from the consultant in B C.
Yeah, the community itself was successful. One of the particulars, and we'll get into the financial numbers and details later. One of the particulars around that is to make the life leases work, essentially you're using individual capital to form a capital pool. It's not part of the capital. In all examples, the buy-in, if you want to call it that, cost is really the full soft and hard cost development requirement. What it does do is it provides security on the exit side. So they're not worried about it. They view it as like an apartment complex where they don't have to worry about maintenance and they don't have to worry about when they're done. But to make a life lease work, you're looking for, in this case, in those cases, full injection of all the capital from the participants. In the models that we're running and the information received, there seemed to be the intent or the want to free up capital that they have invested in people's homes and come in with, let's say, half of the capital value or $200,000 as the buy-in. But when we do that, it starts to really weigh, weigh down the value proposition of the life lease. Debt, as you know, can be your friend or your enemy. In this case, it starts to become a bit of an enemy. So when we look at the numbers, remember that people's intent or they think they can come in with smaller amounts of capital because they're only using it for a period of time. But that's quite frankly, from the experience, an incorrect thought. We'd be looking to form a very large pool of capital to make it work unless there is a silent ownership partner that could then fulfill the difference. And to do that, of course, that moves the values around. I just wanted to explain that in the onset, when you look on screen at those models of, of what it means. If you look at, for example, the example of Covenant Living, I'm just leaning over another screen here and you look at the list price they have and the square footage and such, and you do some real quick head math, you can see the list prices essentially 400 bucks a square foot back when they built it. And remember, we'll always be working off current costs. So when you see the numbers on this screen, start to think in terms of current market. And we looked at the, we of course advanced the numbers to kind of current market costs.
Yes.
We also actually had a chance, we visited Covenant Living also.
Derek.
Oh, is there a question?
Ravi was jumping in.
Oh, Ravi?
Just agreeing with you.
Keep going. Okay. Yeah. Also, under examples, you might have heard of some recent noise out of Edmonton. There was a private market life lease project that did get into trouble and it was due to leveraging.
Yeah, it was a leveraged model.
Which was, which is where you have to be careful of private market use versus the trust when you use like-minded people. They're just building it for the purposes of finding a better way to have housing. So there's not a lot of regulation about it, but we'll get into that later. Yeah, we'll send that back to Ravi.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So one other point just to pick on what Derek was saying about the per-dollar square footage, you know, in a place like Calgary or area around that will be very different from what you will see in Indian. Because this, there is always a location factor that you have to present. Typically, what we've heard from legal contractors is they have to haul it with men and bring people in here, you know. They're not readily available. So usually you see about, I don't know Derek, do you agree about 15% you know, on top of whatever the deconstruction costs are, in addition to contingency that we built into the project.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure the committee is used to that on their other projects. There is a premium to be paid due to location and they would be experiencing, I'm sure that challenges in other projects as well.
Onto the, onto the next slide.
I have a question from Counselor.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks. I think this would be a good time to ask this question. I'm just trying to wrap my head around the model and then the, the transition of the model at say, end of life. So in this case, and then please correct me if I've misunderstood anything. On page 750 of the package of the presentation we have, when it talks about life lease details. So the, the individuals involved, the leaseholders, they, they have no ownership. But in the Cheris Village example, you know, the apartments that they, they had to put up approximately, say, $288,000 to get in on the project, right? So, okay, my understanding is, is that for that $288,000 plus a monthly fee, which seems similar to like a condo fee, I can stay in that apartment until I pass. Okay. Then at the end of that, that transition period, once I've passed, then what happens? What does that transition look like? And then who pays and what's the next payment step? How does that, that cycle turn over?
So it's really, really tied to the contract. So whatever contract has been signed, that completely dictates what happens if it becomes a end of life. Like the leaseholder passes on. So some life leases allow passing to the estate and then it goes into the estate and it gets disposed of through the estate process, settling of that. That's more of a market life lease. A lot of life lease operators do not like that because they lose control of the property. Most of the contracts, although I never read one, are structured in such a way that the life lease is automatically purchased back. And so it goes back to the operator and then they resell it or remarket it. And that honestly is a really big issue with the supportive living models. If you were to go to Covenant Living, which is a supportive living model, it's not an independent living model. You will notice they have constant open houses. Because as those life leaseholders surrender their life lease, for whatever reason, you know, they're trying to get a new person in and we all know lodges have faster turnover. So that part is really, really going to matter and it would be a case of how you structure the contract with your lawyers or how the ownership group structures contracts with the lawyer.
The other piece in some of the overview sheets that we were reviewing from the various life lease holder or programs is the purchase back price. It's dependent upon how long you stayed in the life lease. So it, sometimes it's a declining percentage balance over time. So it'd be 90% after five years, 85% after eight years, 80% after, or sorry, 90, 85, 80 after 15 years. Don't quote me on those exact percentages, but they use that math to make sure that it, obviously it works, that it is a financially sustainable result. And that, and that really represents the, basically, what would you call that? The declining balance from a new property, amortization.
Yeah, the amortization and the economic life of the building.
Yeah. So that calculates in the amortization and repair and renewal costs and such. So it's, it's a complicated answer to your question, but I hope that gives you some context.
It also speaks to the lack of regulatory environment for it.
Sorry, Karen, there's a follow-up.
Sorry, we can't.
There's a follow-up question?
Yeah.
If, if I can. So really, in essence, I think it's really about the, the purchase back clause in the contracts that sort of
Yep.
that impact the estate post-passing away of the individual in question.
Yeah.
So from the estate's point of view, this is cold, but it's important to understand the sustainability. The purchase back is where the, the equity comes back to the estate in some way, shape or form then.
Correct.
Correct. And that would be predetermined at the time you sign the contract. What seems to be the most popular one in Alberta is this fixed value or no gain model where you have use for the term you've signed up for of the unit. And then they've already guaranteed, I'll say, the estate, what the buyout's going to be. And there is, some of them do a sliding scale formula, some of them do a fixed, we're only going to give you, you know, 85% or whatever. Like it's, but those are moving parts, right? And that's part of the thing you determine when you start traveling the road.
The piece that is to be watched out for, you can see how there's sort of a guarantee to the, to the buy-in on what the buy-out means, which is through contract. The piece from the ownership, whoever's managing the ownership, is there's a risk management piece. You always have to make sure you have the ability to take care of a buyout. So you do build reserves for different reasons or you're prepared to do short-term loans while you are bridging loans essentially while you're marketing and fulfilling. In the case of Shere Village, they had a couple of units, they had a lot of troubles on the initial purchase for the, when they're looking to individually sell them, looking for people. And it had to do with the quality of the unit, the scale of the unit, everybody wants something different. So they've been hanging on to a couple of units for a few years now and refusing to rent them. That's their choice. Because they only want life lease tenancy. But when you build a large building, you're surveying, you're taking a certain risk on what you believe the uptake will be. So they're still trying to manage stabilization. So I'm more speaking to risk to that, but it does speak to what happens also in the buyout because you can have suddenly, if everyone signs in at the same time, you could imagine there's a likelihood in the future that there might be a bit of a bump on
Signing out.
On signing out and looking for new tenancy. So you do have to recognize that there is, the financial roadmap is not exactly a straight line when you're managing buyouts. And that's actually where that company got into trouble.
Yeah, not only were they leveraging, they had made no provisions for the idea that, you know, everyone's buying in at the same time. So statistically, they're probably leaving at the same time, right?
Winston has something.
And they didn't provide adequately for that.
We have some comments from Director Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and just to the rest of committee. I think what's important to note as well, I'm actually just building with Counselor Goon's point is that it's not just about at the time of death. There could also be at the level of care required. So should the party not be able to, or one of the parties living there, they may want to say we have to go to level X plus. Is that funds available? Are they available? And it should be, so in the contractual clause, that should be another element that should be very well articulated. And just for the frame of reference, Cheris Village took seven years to get their agreement going after they said we're pulling the trigger. Now, it doesn't mean if this is a model fit for Hilton that we're going to take seven years. But I just wanted to, to demonstrate to committee that it is quite a beast when you look at the financial. Because at the end of the day, we're talking about seniors that do not have the, respectfully said, have the runway ahead of them to recover. And so if we go this way, it's got to be very well thought through and it's a legal process and it's going to have to be turned around in every corner, making sure that that fund which is established, which initially is there for the bone and the ongoing maintenance allows for a certain percentage of cash in or buy out. And that's the balance that I'm seeking to just demonstrate. It's not as easy as just talking through it. It will take us a while to get there, but it is something that we have to really put our collective heads together and place on the ground here.
Yeah, we certainly made a lot of good context that could shorten that timeline, but it does speak to the fact it's a complex legal challenge and getting a structure in place and getting the money in place is not a short roadmap unless you're looking to take the risk full on. As an independent owner in more of a commercial perspective versus doing this as an individual life lease collective to pool the money first. So that really cranks things around quite a bit. Um, there was. Sorry, no, please keep going. Um.
Uh, it's time.
I I lost, I lost a point.
Well, turn it back to, it's time for Ra- turning it back to Ravi.
So the next, uh, we were gonna talk about some of the legal structures used in life lease operations. So the, what you see on the screen is, you know, how the parties fit together, uh, legally in a likely setup. Uh, the structure, choice, effects, control, uh, financing and the risk. There is the general partnership, they can bring in private equity, uh, private capital by themselves, but as liability. Because as soon as they bring their own capital, they want more control. Uh, and then giving likely holders title of membership creates governance or administrative administration headaches. Uh, so getting it right upfront, uh, avoids long-term conflict. So it is, it is really important to look at that, so. Look to the next slide. Well, this is an important slide and we've touched upon, uh, an item already, uh, talking about. How a private financing is very cumbersome and it took Charis Village about seven years to. Uh, arrange for the financing and uh, for during the private resources. Uh, CMHC won't touch it. We've had some discussions, uh, with CMHC about their ability to support lightly's uh, projects. So they don't support it at all. And uh, as I said previously, you know, it requires a creative understanding of the community. Uh, so in base, based on the conditions that we need here to do that, so, but if not, it becomes a challenge. Some of the other challenges are, uh, unsold people units, so there is a lot of market pressure and obviously. When you have to take private financing and then there are theories, there are unsold units that creates increased pressure. Uh, and then in in certain cases, uh, for large projects, you need constant marketing. Uh, and hundred percent of the uh, the cost recovery, uh, is from tenants for financial sustainability of the model. There are some opportunities as well, not to say that everything is a challenge, so. Tenants do feel a superior value pro- proposition to adjust the general rental. Because you, at the end of the day, you put an amount of money and you get it back, uh, at at the, at the end of the term. Uh, less the administrative fees. It also meets the community care objective of, you know, bringing people together and from a, from a community of care perspective. Uh. So those, essentially those are, uh, you know, some of the risks, risks and challenges, uh, you know, that, uh, that we, we thought we should. Bring out and, you know, talk about here.
Just wanna point out, um, before we move on under the challenges, you know, shouldn't see the word scale and quality. The challenge also, all the other projects that have moved forward were of much larger scale than the ten units we've tested. Uh, we don't feel ten units is an appropriate scale relative to the legal costs and challenges getting, going forward. If you're looking to push a life lease project, you have to scale up to make the other costs and challenges pay.
Yeah.
Ten units is really not a life lease program. It is ten units.
Another question from a councillor.
On opportu-
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, just building off of that last comment, then, uh. What would sort of be the ideal number in terms of economy of scale? Uh, to give the uh, the project the greatest chance of success, in your opinion?
The ones we've seen as examples tended to be between fifty to a hundred units. Um, so you know, even apartment blocks of scale, uh, you do kind of hit this tipping point. So in the case of this project, uh. I haven't seen smaller, doesn't mean smaller can be done, but the distribution of the. Um, really a lot of the legal costs and other upfront costs become much higher in a per-unit basis. You just can't spread it around. I think you should be minimally targeting thirty units. That's a personal opinion. I really haven't been able to verify that stuff. Uh, one thing about the common and opportunities, capitals ultimately from the tenant for the project. It doesn't, yes, once you have it all working ticketed, boo, you can extract it either through. Either through the ongoing payment, if debt is part of the ongoing monthly payment. Or if it's one hundred percent upfront, but there's still money that needs to be fronted for the project. Those initial fronts in the case of Shere Village or Shere's Village was paid back. To private lenders. But there is, call it gap financing. So remember, even if you're looking for no matter what, coming. Lee from ten. You, there is a participation required from the owner group, you know, the owner group. Right now in our heads is the town of Hinton. But, or that could be Evergreen's foundation, but bridge that gap and take the risks that we're expressing. We got that sunlight here.
Moving on to the next slide, uh, so this slide talks of how, you know. The the risks, uh, and the impacts around it. So we've talked about it previously as well, and presented to say that C- CMHC or the province will not fund it, so. And again, market risk probably is smaller by a fire pool in Hinton, uh, affordability limits, uh, sales price, uh, sales pace. Uh, operational risk in terms of governance complexity of a nonprofit operator requires very strong administrative systems. Uh, then the, the most important one here is the the regulatory risk. So talked about, uh, you know, uh, many of you may have heard about the Kristensen Group example where. Uh, and we're still, there's about seventy-five million dollars in entrance fees that are still still not returned, so it came kind of. Become big news story. And, uh, so the bill twelve came into effect in, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Uh, to provide some safeguards, uh, to to tenants around that. Uh, which now requires that the entrance fees must be written within one hundred and eighty days, uh, of a lease ending. And then, uh, and any amounts due, they'll be interest paid about nine percent. Uh, non-compliance has hefty fines. This all also means is that you have to keep. More stronger reserves, which means that you're taking away from the build capital. Which is why they collect entrance fees in the first place is to collect everything and build it. And as long as you take away from that. The requirement of debt financing increases, which then is the snowballs into this private financing. Uh, you know, issue or a challenge, uh, where it's very difficult to update. So I think this is a really important risk.
Uh, just one quick co- One quick comment on financing. Uh, you mentioned CMHC, but also major banks, uh, won't touch, uh. Life lease either. They're not used to the product. It's not a common product and they're obviously risk averse. So understanding that's why Shere Village, Shere's Village went to private lenders. And private lenders, uh, we'll talk about that cost and impact.
So next we will, uh, delve into the concept development and townhouse options. Now, this is, this is the part that we talked, when I talked about when I presented the the agenda that. We were looking at just ten, ten unit townhouse development on the site. But the ask from the town was what else could happen on the site? What could be the massing, what all could be fit on the site? So this exercise germinated from there where we said, okay, let's look at. Two or three different options as to how the site could be laid out, given the constraints of the site. So what you see obviously is is a subject parcel. The site is a bit tricky, uh, because of its shape, uh, in multiple rider base, there's an oil pipeline, there's a new, new to be right away on the sub. Uh, so we looked at to to work around these constraints and developing these these massing options. Uh, and also with a desire to build that community of care or campus of care model where we wanna integrate. Uh, eventually with the Fine Valley Lodge where there are walkable communities, uh, you know, enough landscape areas. Uh, and and different typologies on the site. So that's, that's basically the the thinking behind it, uh, when, when putting this together. Uh, but the constraints on the site have been, have been important because it it impacts the buildable area on the site. This is some sample imagery, uh, still different typologies that we've considered in, starting from single level. Duplex bungalows, this is what we saw at Cherish Village and then in two-story townhomes or. An apartment building, different types, uh, on on the left, apartment building option A and B that you see is this. Is which is actually built in Cherish Village. Uh, and then the other one is just a general example of how we see between option. There could be a number of, uh, different iterations or, uh, you know, where you could make and feel. Look, you know, look at the feel of the buildings. It's just some examples. Uh, so now go on to.
I mean, a question from a councillor, councillor Haas.
Yeah, I just, I guess more of a comment than a question, I guess. But my only concern here, I love the layouts. I I like seeing that area the way it is. My only concern, uh, over time, um. In regards to the two-story duplex models, you know, we're looking at these being senior homes and one of the things that we heard. A lot of is the single levels, is the preferred, uh, you know, uh, structure. Um, you know, just because of the stairs and and more than likely, I don't know if there's gonna be basements at all in these ones, but. You know, but I guess that's my only comment, you know, that if we're looking at things that might be a better. Scenario to have of single level homes in the area, you know, when I look at. Your, uh, one of the seniors community hall, which is great, but I mean, instead of having that, you know, because I realize single levels. Can't fit as many in that area than you could, but we can, you know, reconfigure, re- be housing rather than, you know, something in the back, but. But just, that's just a comment of mine when I'm looking, because I just see a number of have those two levels. I love the apartment building ideas. Uh, definitely, um, you know, I I really like the cherish, but not the necessarily life lease option, but. Really nice layouts there too, but that's my only, my only concern with the townhouses.
Yeah, so you're aware the Cherish Village, uh, duplexes, what you see at that little window is actually just. Clear story window, they're a bungalow home, one le- one level with basement. Uh, they were designed to be seniors friendly. Uh, I know Ravi was looking at both density through the two-story townhome units, which provide more density on site. Versus single level duplex, uh, duplex bungalows, which are one level, more seniors friendly, but of course. Reduce the density, so it's a trade-off.
Yeah. So just, just for the clarify, that was an excellent point and and one hundred percent there. Uh, the, there are three options and the way I I've set this out is what, what all can we do with the site? It's like, you can put these sites and then the option B that you'll see, you'll actually see those single level duplex houses. And now we can definitely take the, take the clubhouse and put more duplexes in, but it's all possible. So eventually, whatever direction. Uh, is taken, uh, those comments could definitely be, uh, incorporated. Uh, so just talking a little bit about the, uh, the option itself, so this, this option is being, uh, built. With keeping street friendly, mind walkable, you know, environment. Uh, with the, with the first ten units, the two-story townhomes, there are some of them are rare garage paths, uh, to keep it pedestrian oriented. And there is also, uh, the apartment block is planned for future flexibility. Uh, and in in this case, uh, uh, the idea is on the lower floor floor of of the apartment building. There could be some empty spaces or recreational spaces. And then, uh, maybe half of it is that they could be seniors on the lower floors and as we move forward, they could be. Well, that's all dependent on eventually what comes out of the needs assessment as to see where the biggest, uh, you know, rush fees or biggest demand is. But right now, the, these options show the technologies of what all is possible on these, on these, like, they could be four different options as well. Uh, after this, but this is what, uh, we will come up with. Uh, so that's this option. And again, keeping.
Before we move on, Ravi, I do have a couple of councillors in queue with some questions and comments. So if we could go to councillor chambers and then councillor McGee.
I thank you through the chair. Um, I have similar comments to councillor Haas. Um. I, I find if we go back to, although I wasn't a councillor at the time, when we did the original design shirt with the Bhutan lens. The comments were really surrounding. Not having housing that was in that transition space between. The mill home they're living in, the house that has the laundry in the basement, et cetera, and them not being ready for that next Pine Valley level. So. I think, you know, I understand the density levels, obviously, that that makes dollars and cents sense. But what we're really missing in our market in Hinton is that one level affordable and and not necessarily affordable from. What maybe CMHC or the province of Alberta is, you know, dictates as affordable housing. But something that makes it able for the seniors to transition from their, their existing home, which has stairs, which has the barriers. Um, that prevents them from being able to live independently and extend the amount of time that they can live independently within community before having to go. Onto a higher level of care, whether that be Pine Valley or into continuing care, whatever that looks like. So. I think we really need to be focused on what the community said in those original shrettes was it's. And it's not just that rental piece either, it's, it's the ability to purchase and obviously that's where this life lease came in, is looking at that as a council. Um, you know, what are ways to, you know, to bring in different, um, income levels, different. Uh, styles of of housing that could, could be for the seniors. But, um, certainly having that, that mixed ability to, you know, maybe have some for sale, some for rent, different, different levels. But certainly, I, I think it's, would be a, a big miss of ours to look at anything with stairs. Um, because if it's something with stairs, most of them would be fine just staying in their own home. Um, and that's gonna be the barrier and it's, it's not wise to be transitioning in in that fashion, so. I, I would just caution, looking too much at the density, you know, if we're gonna try to get this right, we need to be filling that gap. In the style of housing that our community is lacking. And we do have townhouses in our community, um, and in a variety of different settings. Um, so, you know, four-story apartment building, sure, they have an elevator, you can, you know, meet a lot of the. Barrier-free requirements within units in something like that, but, um, I, I certainly wouldn't be in support of. Any, uh, you know, two-story type units, because I, I think that it were, we'd be missing the mark on seniors care. Of campus of care, if that's what we're really looking at. So that's just my, my thoughts on that.
For the next question, uh, just in response, any of the, I call it the generalized macro layouts could be adapted either way. It's just, you know. What are you, which is the design preference and then what is the typology? The financial models examine both and it, that's really about can we figure out how to support. Uh, a bungalow level community, because quite frankly, it costs more to build. Um, so that will be the challenge versus a townhome. So that was purely a different way to look at the numbers. But if it's off the table, that's, that's completely understandable, but that, that was a question we needed to take back to you. Looking at both typology and, um, cost and can the community support the cost?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to councillor McGee.
Yeah, without, without going too much over it. You know, when we looked at something similar approximately twelve years ago, that was something we heard from the community was very much that. At grade entry, no stair model was, was pretty, pretty highly sought after from the seniors community. Looking to transition. Um, I guess my question is, um, with option A, B and C. The one thing that I, to start with, have you looked at, do you have more information on? Or would you need direction from council is really in the last twelve years, we've seen a big influx of. Uh, improvement in modular housing, uh, and the economy of scale that can come out with getting a particular builder on board. Uh, who can assemble at their location, ship out, plunk down in place. Rather than having these standalone builds at site, trying to bring all the supplies in. Uh, has that been a consideration of any of the, uh, the project, uh, costs?
Russo. Through to the chair, to all of committee, uh, that was definitely in the background a consideration as the town of Hinton has had experience. With the ten tiny homes that we've done about two and a half years ago. And when you, when you look at where the cost comes from. And when you when you look at where the cost comes from. It basically wants its service, that cost is taken care of. And then to bolt the unit off-site and to ship it in and put it back on its piles, there's definitely a an economy of scale that works. If you're going to do thirty to forty units, you've got economy of scale. Two, you can time it better because you can pile in winter and you can install early spring. And then you can occupy in summer. So those have been, when it comes to the cost comparison to the two, we haven't gone there yet because it's very much dependent on, like I was just working through the details. We're going to do a grade, which is the the preference, which I agree with. Now, is it eight fifty or is it twelve on the square feet? Does it have a garage? Does it have a backyard? Those, that's where those costs comes in, but that would definitely be the parasyia to this, what we are doing right now, the 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 modular buildings.
If if I may take you back to Shere Village, uh Shere's Village. The way they addressed the uh bungalows they built is they. Currently are building them, I will call them as they receive additional demand. So they're not looking to build an economy of scale build, but it takes the risk out of the build overall. They had to build all the upfront infrastructure, so you had to take that on. They had to put sewer system in, lighting, roadways. So that's an upfront cost that had to be absorbed. But housings themselves. They basically had a standard model. They had on every duplex, a large and a small one. And they were building them when they could fulfill a contract. So though they weren't doing economies of scale, it took out financial risk. It depends which way you want to look at it. If you want to get the community done and get it going. You have to take on more financial risk to get the economy of scale working for you. But then you become a developer. So they didn't want to be a developer per se. They built the infrastructure. Um and then they were just managing a standard build. Regarding the question of modular. It's quasi-modular. It depends what you call modular. You buy modular trusses. You can buy modular wall packages. Theirs was fairly, I'll call it minimum modular. Uh. We've seen go by. Uh where modular is paying for itself is really in remote communities. It's not yet paying for itself in more urban areas. I could. You might be on the tipping point between those two things. You'd have to look at that question to a particular design. And if you design it first, you put it out and you see how the market responds. So I wouldn't get too hung up with the modular question. I would be looking at the question of. Uh how do you want to do manage risk or do you want to manage getting a community built and man and and look for scale? So that is would be direction of. We would be looking from from the council.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. So I just to add on to 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 that part, I mean, there are, there's a lot of discussion around modular. These days and I need somebody to confirm that the interim Jasper is modular as well. Part of it. So there might be, you know, something for for to see if it ever becomes fruitful. But we do have uh our uh number of challenges because you have to do. Uh all the infrastructure around it, you know, to build it and then you have to bring it in. And then over a period of time, it could become a little monotonous uh in terms of. But anyways, uh we haven't really looked in depth for modular, so but if that is going to be the direction, you know, that is something we can dig deeper into. So thi- this was the first option. Uh so comments received. Uh second option is is more aligned with what is being discussed of single level. Uh you know, duplex homes. Uh so right now, these are each one of these is a set of two, a a smaller and a bigger one. Uh. Probably, you know, if I can go back to the sample imagery sites, the number one is the. Single level duplex bungalows. Uh so one is is a bigger unit, the other one is a smaller unit. So but those are single level, so there are no stairs and all of that, so that kind of meets the intent of. Uh uh you know, being used for seniors. Now, this option includes uh a clubhouse. It is totally possible that this option could be reworked and add more of those. Duplex uh you know, homes uh to increase the density from that perspective. Uh but we've just considered that uh. And then we could add an additional four to the apartment building to to kind of. Take care of those M N D spaces, which we'll be losing by taking out the community home. But this kind of addresses that part. Uh. Again, uh. There there is still a connection to to Fine Valley Lodge. It is the the whole uh all three options have a common theme of. Uh of the campus of care. We're trying to build it, build a community there, but everybody comes and interacts. So that was the the whole intent. So that this is option B. Uh. Option C, uh this was uh basically asked to see how we can densify the site and hearing what. What I heard in option A, I'm assuming a lot of those comments will translate to this option as well. Uh in terms of uh having multi-level uh in, you know, townhomes uh and. Uh this is just another way of representing uh the the layout of the site. Uh so as I said, this is, this is opposite to creating. Uh more escape areas or open areas. This is more focused to intensifying if there's ever a question, if we were to maximize. Uh there's a lot of demand, how how what what, how much can we fit in the site? But this is what this this layer costs. Okay, so next we delve into uh the financial testing. So uh we'll go to that sub-slide. So. This was to stress us the uh the relationships between entrance fees, monthly fees, construction costs, debt carrying capacity. Uh we we use a simplified model. We only use essential revenues and costs that be included in terms of an operational requirement. Uh this is a scenario testing tool, not real life uh you know, final pro forma. Uh it helps us identify some viability thresholds and sensitivity to changes. Uh inputs our best estimates. Uh I also want to mention this time that Tara on our team is a CPA. He's is able to answer any financial technical questions that may come about when we go to the next slide. The next number of slides. So uh let me say we tested, so we tested the single-level duplex homes. Uh that was part of the original life lease uh ask. So we. Uh we have smaller square footages where we test a combination, as I showed in the image, as a smaller unit and a bigger unit. So there are different combinations. When we say smaller square footage, we have a combination of eight hundred, eleven hundred mix. Uh and then uh we built them at different construction qualities. We call them good, better, best, as you know. The the finishes in inside the building in the units, all of them change. So different construction qualities. And then the entrance is determined based on that and also the monthly fees. So that's kind of setting up how we tested these these scenarios. Uh now we we go on to, you know, how how these units will look, the the location, just an idea of the the floor layouts. Uh a lot of these uh images and inspirations we've taken from the study we have with Cherish Village. So order magnitude uh budgets, the numbers now in terms of a smaller scale townhouse. And in different forms of good, better, best, as to what it costs. Uh not a lot to 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 read here, just just pure numbers and this this is a point in time. And things change and. If Trump keeps changing the tariffs every single day, then it might look different when it actually comes, uh you know. When when it's time for construction. So this is for the smaller scale townhouse.
Um I would mention related to costs because of the projects that continue to ongoing at Charest Village. Uh the numbers are consistent to what they're building at. We've done some adjustments for location, but it is consistent with their last builds. Um and I I know Ravi has uh used cost guarding just to double-check values. So you could take any of those numbers, divide by ten, and that's a per-unit price.
Yeah. So. This slide talks about the equity requirements, so this becomes important. Now, the example is important to note, that the examples that we saw previously, either from Cherish Village or uh you know, other examples. They use one hundred percent uh entrance fee scenario where they would want. The tenants to contribute one hundred percent of the unit cost and they might take them in a couple of installments, but in our case, we were told that. The appetite is not for full hundred percent entrance fee. So we tested. At seventy-five percent, fifty percent, and twenty-five percent entrance fees, that obviously drives up the monthly charges as we keep reducing the the upfront. These that the tenants have to pay. So these scenarios, again, the different construction qualities and different entrance fee scenarios has been tested. And it has been determined as to what the 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 down payments would be and. Uh so with this model, because we are not uh entertaining one hundred percent entrance fees. Uh there is your requirement for debt financing and that is anywhere for the for the smaller scale. Uh situation, anywhere between two point three to four point five million dollars in financing. Now, this again goes back to the first two channels we talked about with private financing. Again, we'll go into that later on in the presentation, but I just wanted to mention that. So this is again the leaseholder commitment. It says for for a eight hundred square feet unit or eleven hundred square feet unit, what is. What would they pay uh in the seventy-five percent scenario and other fifty, twenty-five percent? And what the monthly fees they typically pay. This is based on our research as to what you generally see in different examples that we share. These these numbers will easily change based on the final destruction value when it is built out and uh. And 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 at the time, due to inflation or whatever, the monthly charges could go up. Uh so this this is how it looks for the smaller scale setting. Now, again, this uh. This this is repeating uh on a larger scale townhouse, the numbers change. So with better best numbers change. Uh and then. This is a combination of eleven hundred and fifteen hundred. So if you picture the image that I showed of a small and bigger sized unit. In the previous case, the smaller study was eight hundred, eleven hundred. This is eleven hundred, fifteen hundred. Uh so the numbers uh obviously, th- these are more expensive. Uh again, uh equity requirements uh in this situation where uh you will. In different entrance scenarios and different construction bill qualities. And then leaseholder commitment in this larger scale of of ten ten-unit townhouse. Uh you. Stack.
Do you have a question, Meredith?
Uh thank you. Through the chair to our presenter. Uh the square footage is on uh these pricing sheets. Uh is that ground-level square footage, total square footage? Total square footage. Okay, so the examples from Charis Village that have the. The bungalows, they have a basement that basically matches up the. Double square footage, so they're double the size of of what's listed. That's not.
Ask Karen to clarify that.
It's all above ground. I mean, this is really just. Almost a cousin to napkin math. I mean, it's very difficult to um. Theorize on the square footage of a basement and it's finishing without actually having a drawing set. And you can't really have a drawing set unless you really under, you know. Where where you do your program is sort of a chicken and egg thing. So we purposefully. Kind of have an artificial number of ten units. We purposely have an artificial. Um high-level cost exercise of good, better, best construction based on. Uh industry standards, you know, on Altus's cost book. And then we basically worked it backwards on a thought process of if I were a leaseholder. I'm not sure I'd want to be buying at one hundred percent. I'd want a percent, you know, I I'd be prepared to buy a percentage of, and what does that look like and how does that follow?
So back back to your question, it's above grade square footage.
Yeah. Thank you. Hey, so we're leaning forward. So. You know, just like we talk about understanding of what hard costs and soft costs mean. So it's just generally talking of splitting out. And the budget consumption. So we built. Uh at the time, based on the ninety twenty-four Altus cost guide that was available and uh. This is our order of magnitude with conceptualizing only. And the good, better, best, we took a. Per square feet construction cost of two eighty-five. To three fifty when we go towards best, that has been used uh for for calculating the build quality. Uh we haven't accounted for further impacts due to tariffs in this uh. In this estimation in the order of magnitude. And uh the legal costs associated with likely structures are unknown and they're excluded from this analysis. There are some other assumptions that we uh did when we gave the detailed financial pro formas. And then uh so other than the land, uh we've uh we are not expecting any further municipal con- contribution. Uh that's our assumption. As I said, upfront equities exclusively through the entrance fee payments uh from prospective leaseholders. And we calculated uh when we tested the models, which you'll see later. Uh at a four point five interest rate in the twenty-year amortization, these numbers would change as seriously. Uh as as the the interest rate change does not see in a seat. Uh excuse me. Uh and uh. So the how it is split is at at the time of signing, they will pay twenty percent and remaining eighty percent of his aid of confidence in the construction. So that is a presumption. Just a just a mortgage financing reminder that uh today, CMSC advises that they will not provide funding support for life lease projects. It is a new unregulated, untested legal structure. So as Derek said early on. Fans do not want to fin- finance it. Private equity is the only option that we have to source capital uh often through leaseholders themselves. Uh but we did model uh the alternate financing as an option, if that were to be uh the the desire. So we, there are interest-only construction loans that. Which range from, you know, you know, nine to thirteen percent. So you can have took eleven percent, you know, middle number to calculate the. The construction loans. There are some lender fees on top of that 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 we have assumed. Uh and uh this is the calibration uh exam resulting that. Uh following construction. So. This is how it looks. So you 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 saw the previous slides and uh. So again, uh different entrance fee situations, good, better, best as to. How this these numbers will change when we apply private financing to it. So it's mostly that. Then move on. This this is for the smaller scale units and then we repeat that for the larger scale units. It's it's math. Uh and then, so. This is where, you know, when we got into this depth for life leaves and looking at all the options and say, hey, what can we do? What can we do? We exhausted all the options and then we said, okay, let's now look at alternate models that are available within the existing funding and financing landscape. But that is what the next section of this presentation talks about. So. With CMSC's position remains that, I mean, this is again repeating so that they won't support life lease, but. They would support mixed models that also pave way to access, pave the way to access provincial government programs. But it is important to state here that as of this presentation, all CMSC funding is paused. They do talk about some buckets open under rabbit housing, but they wouldn't confirm that. Uh but it was paused until the the uh fall budget from the federal government. So that is an important uh. Uh item to to understand. So next uh on the slide is what other alternate models are there? So this is kind of a traditional model where we have the CNBC Supportable Housing Fund. Uh this slide talks a lot of detail about what it is uh and, you know, where the what is the eligible criteria. Uh but we do have uh. Success uh when it was not paused. Uh and it is a traditional model that is uh is known and has been successful in the past. So this this could be. Uh an opportunity and viable path, depending on what comes out of the housing needs assessment eventually, which. Points out is where the biggest focus areas are and the biggest rush is. So this is one of those programs. Uh next one is the.
Uh Ravi, before you move on, can you go back to the last one? The key to know about the Affordable Housing Fund, we use that regularly, but it is geared for affordable housing. Huh, is that thirty percent of the units are brought forward at way under market. Uh Kristen would know this through some work. Uh and they are would require financial sponsorship. There is no way, because of the restrictions CMHC has under contract. C M H C has under contract that you can provide them any differently. So you'd have to understand that thirty percent of the units, almost a thirty year project, is geared for low income. They have no restrictions on the remaining units, but they do restrict on those third of the units. You can use the other ones to help carry the cost, but you may also push away the remaining market. And it is a rental prog- project as a whole. It's uh so you're it's it's a rental village. So understand what what they they want out of it is most important because you have to decide whether that makes sense for you. Thanks, Ravi.
Yeah. Uh the next uh program that is available is the Apartment Construction Loan Program. This is again a rental program. We've had some recent success uh on a similar ten unit kind of a townhouse project. Uh it could be a viable path, as I said. Once we do the housing assessment, but this is another viable path uh that could be used uh as we move forward.
Okay, before you move on. Yeah, the this is really more designed for commercial housing, which is where this project sort of started. Uh they use a different marker to deem affordability and they use uh market income versus rents. What that means for you is even the units that are deemed affordable. Um can be had uh can be usually pushed much higher than the other program. This has much more latitude for higher rents, but it doesn't have grants associated with it. So it's kind of given a take. But they do provide favorable uh mortgage rates. Uh their rates generally are better than what you would get. From your lending rate as a municipality under the provincial government.
Very disappointing clarification. I don't believe this program is suspended. I mean, you have that note here.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Is is still uh available if you want to apply. So it is not paused. It is open.
Yeah, traditionally, who applies for the uh the C M H C uh construction loan program? Is it the developer themselves? Or is this a municipal led initiative?
It can be anybody. It's open both to developers, municipalities, private organizations. We've the last one we worked through with was with West Winds Communities in Okotoks. And we built a small project with it. They don't care for small projects, but we have now received approval for a ten year project.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. So all it says is depending on who you are, if the the eligible costs change. And you know, if I believe it is your nonprofit organization is we are to ninety five percent eligible. And then if you change this to province or territories, that goes down to seventy five. Uh but those are some details as depending on who you are, the the amounts change.
In a way, though, those don't really matter. Uh you have to be financially sustainable for any of the accountants in the room. Sure, you can borrow all that, but it doesn't mean. You can, because no matter what, you have to make sure it's financially sustainable. It's not. Uh the numbers don't drive it to the ground. So they have other restrictions beyond the ability. They're willing to lend you lots of money, only if it shows financial results to that they agree upon.
Thank you, Derek. Uh moving to the next one. So next one is about co-op housing. So this is another model that we we looked into it. Uh we use gaining a little bit of of popularity, but uh we we just put in. One of the alternative model of doing this. Uh I know uh. Director Russo is going to talk about it uh later on about co-op housing as well. But this is kind of an alternative model that is available to pursue. Uh it has its own benefits and challenges, but we did not deep dive into this model. It is an alternate model that is possible. This is again similar to the other mo- other models is uh. Uh is the details of what the eligibility criterias are and the what are the requirements there for co-op housing. This, the slide is talks about. We were struggling to place this slide where it needs to be because this is an exception uh. Uh for a life lease, this uh so maybe Derek, you can talk about this a little bit more where this. This project received some amount of life lease funding, but it was not just living. So maybe you can you can expand on that.
Sure. So for those who watch the provincial budget carefully, and I'm sure you all do, they have in their last three budget introduced the um. Affordable Housing Partnership Program. We stack that money with the federal government and we've been fairly successful doing so. Uh A H P P has been competitive beauty contest uh for projects. Uh they have had three rounds. This was uh a successful application in round two. And included life leases, which raised my eyebrows because you did mention that. But you will also notice it kind of looks like a whole community of care in one package. So it's got everything on it. Uh I do not know if C M H C. Uh chose to be part of this project. Uh at the time. My conversations were I don't believe they knew about it, uh that they were going at it without. The without C M H C and only with the province's backing. Um it is an unusual mix. They also received money through Alberta Health to support the project. But what was interesting is they included life lease as a solution. And the province through the H P P program supported this. So in short, it appears there's opportunity for the province maybe to consider life lease. They have not indicated at all what kind of project they prefer. It's really a grab bag approach. And I hate to, I hate things that don't give priorities or really give clarity, but it's a grab bag. But they opened the door. So if you wish to pursue life lease and if you believe the province needs to participate in your project. Maybe you could also pursue H P P, which is why we included this slide. But it was a really unusual project. That won a very fairly significant capital grant.
Okay, so we just wanted to bring that to your attention, that there is an exception that that exists. Next, we are going to, so when you looked at these alternate models, we talk about what they are, what the requirements are. We also did test them uh to see uh in which there are. What are what are the requirements in terms of uh. Rehabilitable loans or, you know, upfront equity that is required. So some of this slide talks about the assumptions that we've made. Uh in building, building that testing. So you will see on on the screen is this is again for a smaller square footage. Just just use the best construction quality in this case and not modeled. With better best here, just use best construction construction quality. And uh with with three uh rows are are. What happens under C M C E H F program if we were to pursue that uh for a ten unit project? How does it look like in a co-op setting? And how does it look like in a apartment construction loan program setting? Uh and we also talk about, we we had some assumption on rents this way. Because that is what is required when we do the financial pro forma and testing. We have to include rents, operating. Uh expenses and all that. So this shows that detail.
Yep. The rents we're showing are definitely below market for new product, without question. Um and there would be a mix. So it depends what you're targeting for community affordable or what that means for your community.
This is for the the larger square footage, uh again, similar. So that brings us to the end of the uh the alternate models and testing. Now, we are in the concluding stage of this presentation where we talk about the observations and recommendations that we have. And then we followed it up with uh with the next steps. So the observations that is just to summarize what we've discussed is. If life lease, there are material, legal, financial and governance risks that can come about. Uh there are refund obligations. You need additional financial planning. There's uncertainty. Uh long time frame for development. This goes back to the seven years of financing. And market readiness and demand for life lease housing in Norway is currently uncertain. So our our recommendation is uh do not proceed with life lease model at this time. Uh and then leverage provincial and federal funding and financing programs when they become available uh come fall. And all one of the recommendations also to watch that. Uh what happens uh in the next steps is to follow along and we will be sure to update uh update. Uh the town as to what comes out of it. Uh set boundaries for the project scale, running the project worthwhile. What kind of approach do we need? This probably is uh informed again by the housing needs assessment. So we will. You will need that information to be able to make the decision, I presume. Uh recognize that uh the site servicing offsite development isn't a part of our. Uh budgeting. So if there is any, I understand that the site is serviced as the as we speak, but depending on how. You densify the site. Typically, in my experience, uh. The the pipe sizing can change depending on what you put on the side or what you have currently. You might need to upsize some maybe additional costs that have not been accounted for. That could be on top of that. You know, another recommendation is is based on our discussion with Director Russo and team. Is uh to explore a cooperative housing model on an alternative site to to gauge community appetite and participation. Uh so that's our observations and and recommendations. Uh I don't know, Derek, if you wanted to add anything to that.
Sure, just on the cooperative housing model, understand the way it is, it would, it needs to be owned by a cooperative. So you have to explore whether you would be successful forming, having a cooperative be formed. If you can't find enough appetite that they'd want to do that, don't go down that route. So you know, it takes a very driven group, again, a very cohesive group. So that's the challenge with cooperatives. You'd also have to design, decide whether that fits a seniors' community model, whether cooperative is also a proper fit for that. If it's an alternative project that has, that is not part of the community care, and again, we talk about using an alternative site. Maybe keep it on your radar. You really got to decide what what you're driving to um and where you fit in in the process. Uh with reference to define municipal financial tolerance. A and B are really separate. One is, are you prepared to put provision of equity for a project? Having a cap or giving us blinders is okay. You could be saying, no matter what. Our limit is two million dollars. I'm just throwing a random number up there. The reason being, we can come back and formulate what that could mean, which is by choosing to do smaller units. And try to and look at the revenue model, see how much gap we can close, to be able to see how many units we can get. So instead of saying it's ten units or nothing, you can provide us a tolerance. And we can come back to you with what a solution could be. The other route is um financial risk. If you want to go down a certain path, going no, but we're prepared to. Act as a security. It allows us to be much more successful securing monies from other organizations. Because we know you have is a backer. It becomes a risk, but you trust those that are leading the work. That you you agree that the risks have been reasonably mitigated. So those are two considerations that we would uh recommend you discuss. Um been very important to it. Boundaries are important to us. If we have further idea about project scale. We already heard about bungalow. If that's on the table in the first part of the project, that's great. We would then pair that with boundaries and maybe play with the scale of the bungalow. So you can see how when you give us boundaries and blinders, we can provide very succinct answers in return. And what that would result in a development. Just looking at the other points that were written down, uh offsite development, Ravi covered that off. You understand our reluctance with the life lease. I don't believe you have the scale for it. The only way I'd suggest you look at that would be and as the bungalow. Small, you know, one or two units at a time, but there's a legal cost you'd have to be prepared to take on. Um and would not be small to actually set it up. Back to you, Ravi.
Thank you, Derek. Uh so now we are on the on the next steps. So. Next steps would be to complete uh demand assessment or other needs assessment for the town Pinton relative to the age demographic. The good part of this is that we do have, as we did have some success with the. An application we made under the Sector Transformation Fund with uh Community Housing Transformation Center, uh which. Doc Director Russo mentioned at the beginning that we were successfully getting thirty five thousand dollars of the fifty thousand dollars asked. So that's the cover for for this work. So we have already started on on that work. So it it will help. Uh but for the decision making and providing direction as we as we go forward. The next step we talk about is is assess partnership requirements and develop framework agreements with the with Evergreen Foundation. Or uh how how you will uh to represent uh the project and develop specific outcomes that. Aligning the objectives of Evergreen Foundation for affordability and meets the town's objective for community keep up care development. And then again, uh look at when C M C provides those uh update updated funding. Uh updates uh in during the fall budget release to see what comes out of different different funding programs. Don't believe a whole lot is going to change, but I don't know, Derek, do you think the programs are going to change in terms of how they've structured it now?
Um I don't foresee them doing any major structural changes. The question I have is if they decide to pivot over the, quite frankly, the last eight years in their direction. Related to the election, where they're looking to push their resources towards federal lands projects. That's what they were campaigning upon. And that would be a shift in the resources. That I believe would make an enormous amount of projects in the pipeline and the owners behind them extraordinarily angry. Uh there are, I know from my own and. Hundreds of millions of dollars that are literally of projects under review that have put in tens of millions of dollars of efforts to get there. So I think it would behoove them to throw a bunch of ready to go projects out the window. So I expect that to come back online. Uh the Affordable Housing Partnership Program, sure. Uh we would be looking at whether these make sense for you and stack relative to your objectives. At this point in time, we're aware that. The municipality did not want to be a financial participant. My questions are really about, are you prepared to be part of financial risk? Or at least in part, understand that you may be supporting within that context, a portion of it being. For affordable, like low income housing and how that influences maybe your partnership with Evergreens. So you know, where does that lie? If that's not the case and you decide this is a commercial venture, then we're looking down the wrong programs. Maybe with the exception of the Apartment Construction Loan Program. What you want out of it. Is really important to inform us that we don't go down a bunch of roads and come back to you with. Wide open information versus information that you've you've helped us with good blinders. We need blinders to do a better job for you. And again, that's really speaking to that last point, which that what what we mean by define the municipal role and assess the financial requirements. So you need to be able to tell us what your municipal role is. At this point in time was a community driven for. Life leases and you're helping that along, but we need to know where you stand in 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 this going forward.
Thank you, Derek.
Mr. Russo, through to the chair to our committee again, I just wanted to maybe just for those that are listening in. That the information that we gleaned from how seniors complex are run, what are some of the demands? We consulted with Evergreen. By no means are we seeking to align Evergreen as a partner at at this discussion. We're talking about a nonprofit organization that we could be talking to. So I just wanted to, for those that are listening, there is no tacit uh sort of understanding. That we have talked to Evergreen for them to be the partner. It was simply they are in the community. It was just to just tapping to their. Knowledge base and that's this is what the reference is to this presentation.
Apologies if I overspoke. I just know Evergreens well. So you go, you tend to jump to conclusions. So apologies if I've misled counsel.
Thank you, Anderson.
Uh thank you. Through the charity committee, I'd like to.
Uh thank you. And through the charity committee, I'd like to follow up on the Evergreens comment here. Uh this slide uh clearly mentions uh potentially finding a framework to partner with the Evergreens uh foundation on this. The, the town opinion has partnered with the Evergreens Foundation in a number of ways. One of the, the most recent ones is one of the tiny homes. Uh and that is the partnership where the Evergreens Foundation is the housing management body under contract for, for the town. Uh those kinds of relationships seem to be relatively uh. Common in terms of ask from our municipalities and it seemed to be relatively straightforward to move forward. But in terms of getting Evergreens on as a, a partner in building out a capital asset. Uh Evergreens Foundation has a, a longstanding capital plan. Uh that capital plan included the investment in the Pine Valley Lodge here in Kingdom. Uh it includes the investment up in grant cash and uh most recently, we just were awarded funding for uh lodge in Wildwood. Uh the lodge in Wildwood will take the Evergreens Capital Plan to its conclusion. And at the conclusion of that, the board will have to go back and make uh another long-term strategic plan. So if it were the interest of council to bring something to the Evergreens Foundation uh to look for a partnership towards building something on these lands. Uh that is likely a process that will happen later in the next council term. Or potentially in the term after that due to the Evergreens planning cycle. So I just want to put that out there for council to understand. Uh that this, none of this uh discussion has made it to the Evergreens board. There's no defined project here from. Uh the Evergreens perspective as yet, uh but they are a great housing management body in our committee, they're a great partner and. Of course, we managed to get some funding, uh opportunity funding because of the great work that they're doing and the relationship they have with. With these funders to do this research, but.
Yeah, I, I would say though, how we got the additional thirty seven thousand dollars was. By using Evergreens to front the application, we needed them to do so because of who they were. So from an exploratory position, um that would take place because they're managing those grant funds on your behalf. So I just want to be clear about, at least from exploratory, that they're. Through you, through them, uh are holding the funds.
Okay, thank you, Councilor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I've missed anything, feel free to chime in and let me know. Through the presentation, the one thing that's become abundantly clear to me and it's easy. Uh life leafs is, is not a good option. Well, that, that's pretty easy. I think I was, you know, pretty convinced of that about halfway through. But when I'm looking at the action item, the recommended action. That committee reached consensus to proceed with exploration of a phased approach to housing. That incorporates the available CMHC funding streams presented. Analyzed with the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five strategic plan for full development of Bhutan lands. Maybe I misunderstand, in essence, we've already done it. And council has made, as part of its strategic plan, to search and build out. You know, various options for seniors housing. We're looking to fulfill a gap in seniors housing. That's why we have the Bhutan lands. So I guess where I'm a little confused is, what's the next step? Now, when I look at the next step that's on the board, it says. Complete a demand assessment. Maybe I'm wrong, but my personal opinion is we don't need to do that. We have really, since I've been a councillor for twelve years, we've done that. We've sat down with the community on multiple occasions and said, what do you want for seniors housing? Going back twelve years ago, back to the design threat that we've had. We've consistently heard from the community that our transitioning seniors want. At great bungalow style housing. And I, I did hear Derek mention, the more parameters we can give, the better. Cause it gives them a, a better avenue to, you know, sort of search down. So for me, it's. I don't think we need to spend a whole bunch of time looking and completing a demand assessment because honestly, if I'm the community, it's going to irritate. If the town comes back again and says, well, what do you really want? We want at grade seniors housing. We've told you that. We want some apartments for seniors. The question is, who's going to build it? Who's going to own it? Who's going to run it? I don't have answers to that in this report. So I guess my question to administration is, what do I as a councillor need to do to make those things happen?
Thank you, Chair and uh Mr. Russo certainly jumped in, but. We've, we have gone out to a lot of, we'll say, public engagement, but I think there's a meaningful difference of. You know, what do you want? And in, ensuring that there's parameters around what we're asking, because we understand that people. A large part of the senior community want at grade housing. Um but we've never dived into the details about what that means. Are you comfortable? And you know, should we be looking at a model that doesn't include ownership? Or is that an important factor for most of the, the seniors' housing? You know, most of our accounts are anecdotal in nature and especially our approach of saying, you know, we didn't. The town did not want to be the developer and we did not want to be the entity granting the funding. So although we may have, you know, have lots of time working with the community, any prospective partner that we're ever going to get in this process. Does not have that background, is not going to have that comfort level based on our word. So I think that, you know, having some. You know, drilling down into that demand is going to be critical when we're looking at attracting some partners, whoever that might be. Um in order to get this project completed. So I think that's a critical step. I think that once we have some more details on, you know, the demand and the particulars of what demand. Uh the community is after, and I think there's a lot of conversations that we need to have as a council, like. Uh our presenters mentioned, we do need to narrow down the scope of what we're looking for. We do need to have uh. Discussions about, further discussions about our participation, um you know. What type of model, you know, are we looking at an affordable component? Um and going after federal funding, or are we looking at a, you know, a purely market based? You know, there's a lot of these decisions that'll need to happen, but I think that in order for us to answer those questions meaningfully, we have to have a. A, a good demand ass- uh assessment from the community. Um that drills down that layer deeper versus just, you know, what kind of housing would you like?
Yes, please. So I guess then my question for the C E O is uh, I'm assuming, I suppose. That the recommended action takes us further down that path to achieve that goal. Uh and if that's the case, uh and you can correct me afterwards if that's not right. Uh but if that is the case, just speaking my mind. I think that the town has, and by town, I mean the political will of council. Is that we have to be willing uh to be invested in this process and take some risks. Uh financially, and I know, you know, one of the things I've heard. In my time as a councillor, often uh, you know, people take the stats, well, the town, you know. Geez, we don't ever want to ask as a, a developer. We want to be careful what we sort of financially risk. Well, the thing is, I think if we want to achieve some outcomes within a, a reasonable stretch of, stretch of time, we have to be willing to. Step out of the box. We need to be willing to do things that we wouldn't traditionally do. In order to uh attract the right kind of developers as partners into those projects. Uh I, I'm willing to support a recommended action if it's made, uh but I just, those are my concerns and, and I trust the CEO's recommendation. If he feels that this will get us down that path further, but there we go. Thank you.
Yep, before I know it, who, Mayor Nissen, Mr. Russo, did you have something to add?
Please, please, thanks, Mr. Chair, and just for the rest of the committee. Thing what's also important about the needs assessment or the demand assessment. Is that if we are looking at partnering with anybody that's on the private sector. That document will serve as a very latest, recent stat statistic. That the return of their investment will be realized in the next period as they run those numbers. So that's the value one. The second value would be is that, um we've talked along goes to Shavetan several years ago. Uh things have changed. That may yield to us different elements that we may not be discussing here tonight. So that can be further bolstering our efforts to go forward. And, and then finally, when we look at the build out of the Bhutan lands as a whole. The Shavet has not just focused on seniors, though this motion is talking about seniors. We had a host of things that we could consider. So if you look at how the grant is structured. And a little bit of inside knowledge that I get as to what the, the, the feds are going to do with this up, upcoming funding. Is going to mean that we need to be, I don't want to say shovel ready, but ready to put a credible application forward. That can address the other need that we have come up to the needs assessment.
Yeah, uh Ravi, would you add something?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and also get Derek's point of view on this. As one of the requirements, if we do move forward with the, the uh federal funding. Is this document is a requirement, a mandatory requirement, an updated needs assessment that needs to be uploaded. Uh when we go through the application process, so it is extremely important to have. Although there have, it, it's useful that discussions have happened, it only supports that process, but we need an updated document that needs to be uh. Uploaded to aid both provincial funding applications and federal funding applications. Just wanted to clarify that. I know Derek, uh you wanted to chime in as well.
Yeah, sorry, I can't find, put up the hand tool, so here I am. Um the demand assessment work, uh so, I, I actually, I don't like needs assessments. They, they tend to be very loose and open and they're hard to interpret. And they tend to be too community based. Demand assessments is, is basically like actuarial accounting. You're looking at your populations, your population shifts. Um what's happening, especially if you talk community of care, because I will guarantee you, you're going to watch. Watch your seniors' population double in the next twenty years. But you will find the curve and you will be able to fully understand that type of housing. Uh you experienced that already with the lodge where you built it and you filled it. And people didn't think that would happen. So demand assessment is about numbers and trends and forecast. Yeah, and it's also relationship to income and income forecast. It's not generally, what kind of house would I like? What do I need? It's what's going to happen in your community tomorrow. So I wanted to do a little clarification about a demand assessment wise. Uh the second part, there was a question about where did the money come from and why do commu- why are towns struggling and why do you need to pivot? With the seniors' housing boom, um it's seniors and no senior. Wants to reinvest in housing. So the problem is, is where does the capital come from, which is why life lease seems interesting all the time. Um and it is a problem. Developers struggle going to communities if they can't sniff a profit, they're not going to come. Which is why there's a general housing struggle these days. So it will be the question is, where do you want to participate to ensure housing is built for an aging population? When the general public won't participate with capital. They want to rent or find a better means like life lease. Or um B, you can't attract uh. Private equity because maybe there's not enough income in the community to support new housing. Or the type of services make it financially uneconomic for the tenants. So communities are being forced to participate whether they like it or not. So it is navel gazing you have to do. Uh, uh where you said. Yeah, sorry, that's sort of like tough love talk, but I. Get to a lot of sessions and you have to go, where do you, where are you going to land as a community and how important is it relative to your scarce resources?
Great, thank you.
I, yeah, I'll step out and then come back in.
Uh thank you. And through the chair, remember we have a quick question related to Council McGoon's comment on the recommended action. And I guess this is probably directed to administration, but if it was the will of committee to remove the life lease. From consideration, would you need a motion or consensus for that prior to the recommended action coming to the table?
Uh through the chair to members of committee, yeah, any, any parameters that we're willing to make today, I, I think that's helpful.
Thank you, Chair. Can I uh continue to ask many? Thank you. Uh so regarding the demand assessments and, and these sort of needs assessments, uh as. Through my role on Evergreens, uh it's very clear for all of these housing funding streams that. Uh there's a timeline for all of the reports that are required. It's about a five-year lifespan for a report. And regardless of whether you have an up-to-date report or anything's changed, if it's old, it doesn't count. Uh so I understand the need for that, but my question through the chair to administration is. Uh do we still have funding allocated to complete this demand assessment or is there going to be another financial ask based on the decisions of council today?
Good to, Marynissa. Um we, the grant I received two, three weeks ago. Uh will cover the demand needs assessment. Um if anything else, we will then bring forward to the budget twenty twenty six, whichever are the relevant, but we should be able to get this one over the line. In order for us to be ready for any granting that's coming forward in the late form.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. That's on your end.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to take the recommended action, move the committee reach consensus to proceed with exploration. The phase approach to housing that incorporates the available CMHC funding streams presented. Uh and that aligns with the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five strategic plan for full development of the Bhutan lands. Uh it's been spoken to a number of times on.
Okay, so just before we go to that, though, I'm just going to look to administration. I don't believe we're actually transitioning from the presentation to the actioning. Is there a presentation to go with the cooperative housing background information?
Uh there's no presentation with a card, the report you have as part of your package. That is what the conversation is going to be once this motion is decided.
Okay, very good. Just wanted to confirm there wasn't additional information for administration or requests for direction. Okay, thank you, Councilor. Thanks, Marynissa. Direction request on the table. Any comments or questions, Councilor House?
Yeah, just a, I guess a clarifying question, so I make sure I know when, you know, it, it, what I'm in favor of. So. This. Direction, uh the way it's worded is going to incorporate the needs assessment. Uh and the recommendations and all the other things, uh that's going to be part of, okay. But to Mayor Nissen's um. Question earlier, if we want to exclude life leases from this, then we're going to have to have a separate uh, uh direction. Um and that also includes that, I, I don't know if we need it, but I guess my question is, is, you know, and I. I, I appreciate we were looking at density, we were looking at, you know, like, you know, that, that, that. Level homes, you know, we're not interested in that. Is that something that we need also as a possible direction? Following this one that would give you those parameters that Derek was talking about?
Thanks, go ahead, Chair. Uh the, through the chair, the members of um committee. I, I think that anything that I've heard that committees pretty well aligned on a few of those key things like at grade and that, that style of housing. Um you know, I, I think I hear a strong sense that we're not interested in moving forward with the life lease, so. You know, we can certainly agree to this, and then if there's any other specific parameters, um. If, you know, specifics and council clearly letting us know where you sit on these things is always valuable, so. Uh if we would like to make those, um those decisions today, I have, I think that's appropriate. Thank you.
So if I could quickly speak to it, I will be in favor of this, uh but again, I think. We can narrow it down a wee further, you know, after this particular management, we'll see which other directions, so thank you.
Thanks, Councilor House. Uh for myself, I'll be in support of the, of the proposed direction as well. But I do think it's important that we do uh narrow up the scope of it. I've got some, some comments that I, I haven't put forward yet, but I, I, I will through additional discussion. I think i- it is important that we take a look at making sure that we give the best direction we can. Based on feedback, we've found from the community, look what the community wants, we move forward, so. I'm looking forward to that discussion after this motion is called question. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so when I'm there, you would ask to have this. The motion is that committee reached consensus to proceed with exploration of a phased approach to housing that incorporates the available. Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation funding streams presented. And that aligns with the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty five strategic plan for full development of Bhutan lands. If there's no other comments or questions, we will call the question, please vote now. That is carried unanimously. Thank you. elsewhere else?
Yeah, I'd like to start things off with a, a direction that we uh exclude the life lease. Uh funding option. To the uh development of the Bhutan lands.
Thank you, Councilor House. Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, if I could real, just real briefly, but you know, based on, you know, the, the reports and, and the experience. You know, this just doesn't seem a good fit. Uh I think there's a lot of risk. I think there's a lot of expense. Uh hidden expenses and legal fees. I think there's a lot of, you know, to the, to the uh individual that would be doing it as well. So I just don't see it a good fit. And I think it's also determined that the size. Uh despite the fact that, uh you know, the government, uh there was some of a smaller scale. I just don't think the size fits for it. So I think to be. I just don't think the size fits for it. So I think to be good, it's we got from from this up the.
I think and through the chair to administration, I understand the the life lease concept was brought to us by a group from the community. And working with a group within the community that uh set off this report and and got us headed in the life lease direction. Is that accurate? Is there still a group in the community interested in pursuing life lease model?
So through the chair to me and listen, so it wasn't a group that came to us that had brought the idea for life lease. It was an individual or two that we had a discussion around a table like this. And have you ever seen what Ontario is doing? We took the documentation that we had, maybe a follow up. And we looked into it and that's where it got it, that was kind of the genesis of it. But and we haven't been in touch with the group or individual. We simply said that council was dealing with it as we go through the workshop back in February the twenty seven year we are tonight. And we realized where it's at, so I don't think there's going to be a day of mourning because life lease may not go forward in the community. I think that we thankful to know that we turned every stone, that we looked after the interests.
Thank you, I may follow up. So through the charity committee, I'm gonna be in support of uh this consensus on the floor. If there was a group actively looking to move a project forward and managing, I'd have some second thoughts. But I have no interest as a municipality of building a life leases. And unless there was an order group actively looking to put a project forward, I don't think it's worth administration's time to pursue this model. Thank you.
Many, any questions? Seeing nothing further, committee, we will call the direction request. Question that committee exclude the consideration of the life lease model in the exploration of approaches to development of the boot hand lands. Many, if you could please vote now.
To your chair, to consensus. That council, sorry, I'll just wait till you're ready, I know it's a tricky thing. Uh to direct administration to explore. Private modular housing option. As part of the. Full development of the boot hand lines. I think this is one potential uh fit that might work in this particular area. Administration has asked for any more uh input from council that we give it now, this is something I think would work. Uh additionally, when we talk about, you know, what's the options here? Council and the town have the ability to act as at least a partial developer and getting some of these areas service ready. Uh to bring the price of these options down over the long run to uh some of our citizens who may be interested in going in there. In my mind, this is a bit of a, you know, a private partnership working where we can help citizens bring their total cost down. And also bring in uh private developer, uh where if there's a large base of customers, it it potentially lands them some profit. And it may actually garner their interest. Thank you.
If there was someone to do. David, any comments or questions? Mister host?
Yeah, I'll be in favor of this, uh at least at least to explore the option. Um you know, we've been hearing, as you said, there's a, there is a trend, uh you know, towards modular housing. Because of the expenses of the traditional buildings, you know, getting the materials here and and the travel. And you know, also the staffing as well, that's been also said. So, you know, I think it's worthwhile to to take a look at the option. Um you know, not only for the homes, but potentially also for the apartment building. That as well, because that's another thing that we heard at AM conference uh recently, or we were last meeting to. Uh the exploration of that for for the apartment building as well. So I think this is a good direction, so I appreciate the 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 direction and I will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor host. Yeah, for myself, I'll be supporting it too, as long as it's in tandem with uh looking at traditional stick build construction. There's some, been some indications and comments that modular construction in terms of of. Uh the economics of it lends itself better to more remote locations than Hinton, we may be on the fringe again. Uh one of my concerns though is to achieve an economy of scale going with the modular. Would be looking at a commitment to do twenty units or something like that, which would come at a cost of several million dollars. Where uh even in the traditional stick build model, it could be done one at a time with minimal minimizing the amount of risk that would be taken. So as long as they're in tandem, I have no problem in supporting this. Thank you. Committee. Anderson.
And thank you, through the charity committee administration, I'll be supporting uh this as well. Um when I look at the examples and and the options here. You know, we've talked about at grade being important to the community, I think at grade is is the only thing we should be building here. I don't, I don't think two stories and stairs is is even worth considering myself. But uh with that as well, I think some of the examples we're seeing here, especially from uh some of the life lease options in the bigger cities. These are pretty large units, and I think about the the tiny homes that we built, that tiny home development. I think about specifically the accessible tiny homes, there's the two units that are wheelchair accessible, they've got the full access showers. They're about a thousand square feet, those in my mind are perfect transition units for for a senior. Moving from a big house into a or a senior couple, moving into something that's about a thousand square feet, has no barriers. It's easy to access the resources for them within the community. And I'd really like to see that sort of thing go forward. So I'm gonna support the modular housing and I and it's a direction or is a a recommendation. I'm more than happy to see smaller units uh to get more density and and more units into this space. Uh because I think that's really what we're talking about is downsizing at the end of the day. Uh so I'll be supporting this. Thank you, Chair.
So nothing further from committee. We'll call the question, the direction request that committee reached consensus to direct administration to explore private modular housing. Options as part of the full development of the boot hand lands, many if you could please vote now. That is also carried unanimously.
I'd like to seek consensus uh that uh. All considerations are at grade uh because uh development. That captures what we're seeking here, other than the. And if I can quickly speak to it, Mr. Chair, I I think, you know, this is is the best option. And I I do agree with, you know, Mayor Nissen, you know, maybe not all of them that size, but you know, a consideration. You know, we've heard from a thousand to fifteen hundred square feet-ish, stuff like that, depending on, but but I think they all, you know, they need to be at grade for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor host. I just, I have a question for administration regarding the direction. Is the interpretation of at grade, does that just mean very little entry or does that mean uh same floor or same story?
Uh to the chair, I I can give you my interpretation, but my my interpretation. No more than a couple stairs up to the doorway and then everything is on one level. Uh but there's no upstairs, there's no, I guess it could be an option for basement, but technically it's just one level.
Would it be helpful to administration if the one level was included in our direction? Or is that understood?
Through the chair, it's understood by um by I think us in this room today. But you know, if we could add that, um you know, so it's easier for everybody to interpret. You know, maybe months later, I'm aware we resonate, it'd be helpful. Thank you. So yeah, uh men, sorry Derek, you can add that, I'm totally mental to that, to that too. Uh because I appreciate, yeah, you know, these all be clear and what that is, so thank you.
I think just another uh clarifying, clarifying piece on that, I think when you talk about, you know, all all one level. It it's really all of the necessary amenities for your living, so your laundry, it's your, you know, you're not going to a different floor to to shower. And it's also, we haven't really talked about the barrier free piece. Um I think that that's a critical piece as well, because if you have everything on one level, but you don't have the wits of the doorways and you don't have the. You know, it doesn't necessarily need to be full accessible. We've we've explored some hybrids through the seniors lodge program on what that looks like, but things like the wider doorways, the rule and showers, those type of things should really be. Um a critical piece as well in that, so that you're really looking at how how to extend the useful. You know, the useful life of of these units as the variety of of different transitions for that aging process go over the seniors. So I think it's, you know, really having everything there and, you know, the reality is even the one or two stairs to get into the unit can be a barrier to people. So, you know, if maybe there is a couple that have a few stairs, but is there ramp options, is there things like that, we really need to think about. Yeah, what what that looks like and and how do we keep people in uh these units as long as possible as they continue to sort of agent place. So just a, just a thought, because it hasn't been brought up.
Thank you, councillor chambers.
Uh I just Derek had had a comment that he wanted to make, so okay.
Sure, just just a clarification, when you're telling, I I would be using, you're looking for a. A repeatable solution versus modular, so where you find the best economics is through repeatable. It may be modular or not, it wouldn't want to box yourself in with emotion, so just language. The other one is you were talking smaller units, we presented two different scale combinations with each duplex. Um that helps clarity for us when we look at economics. Uh so we used a eight hundred to eleven hundred square foot combo, which is like a small to a small medium. That sort of clarification also provides us good clarity without testing multiple scales and combinations. So those two items, one is an economic repeatable solution. The other being conversations seem to be leading towards a small, medium, repeatable duplex product. If that makes sense to you, uh I would suggest using that language, gives us direction.
Okay, thanks for that. I think that kind of sounds like that's what the consensus, you know, the unformalized consensus. Around the table seems to be, I was hoping it was going to get to that, to bring a little bit of the additional clarity about that. So perhaps I'll come forward in some additional direction. I would think that's not part of the direction that we have before us, but I'm guessing somebody else might to, might have an opportunity to put the, put that clarification. Anderson.
Uh thank you, and through the chair to administration, uh councillor chambers mentioned barrier free. Is is barrier free a term that is well defined and known in the seniors housing development side of things? If we were to include that in one of these motions, would that make sense to us? Seems not.
Through the chair, right, I believe so, but we would probably tap our experts at the senior. Uh evergreens foundation is to make sure, but I think that that's well understood by.
Yes, it's very free or accessible, yeah, these are the language that uh we consistently use. And there are actually uh requirements from for these funding programs to meet certain expectations. Uh complying with these standards, uh when we build seniors homes. It is a common language to use, be that very accessible.
Okay, thank you. So through the charity committee, I'm not a hundred percent sure how I feel about the motion as it's ordered currently. I think we are getting a similar consensus. Uh one of the things that councillor chambers brought up really well. And looking at this map, on the south side of Bhutan app, we're gonna have twenty one seniors units, modular seniors units put in by the province. They're going to be pretty close to to barrier free, as I understand it, but they are going to have that three or four step elevation at the start. And I wonder if where the stage we're at, if we couldn't set the direction to look at on our side of Bhutan app. Doing these duplexes and seeing if we can get no stair solutions. I really do think that if we could find, and I don't know if if they're really out there, if there's true engineering problems here. But if we could get no stair solutions, I think that's really what we're we're trying to ask here at the end of the day. Um and I would support this consensus reworded to meet some of the wording of our consultants here. And uh and maybe to make that no stairs situation rather than just one level, not a hundred percent sure where we're at here. Thank you, Chair. Councillor host might see these, guess not.
You know, I think honestly, I mean, I'm hearing no barriers. I I was going for the, I don't want them to have to do stairs to go to the laundry or whatever. But I'm learning more as we're having this conversation. And I think honestly, I mean, I'm amenable to adding these things to that, whether it be no barriers, whether it be accessible. Whether it be no stairs, because what I'm hearing the consultant say, so uh we can either leave it as is and add friendly amendments along the way. I'm good with that, because I think that accomplishes my goal as well. Uh you know, because I I want to give the our contractors that that parameter. So that they can come back with a a good look at the financials. So um yeah, I think to to is to add it to the particular one. It's one level that we can add to it, if if the chair and the rest of the committee is fine with that, I'm good with that.
Councillor chambers.
And that's the council chambers.
Councillor chambers.
Could you just, let me know the motion that's on the table at the moment?
The committee reached consensus that all housing considerations for the full development of the boot hand lands on one level housing.
I almost wonder if we could maybe have a friendly amendment to say something around like just senior friendly design. I I think we're getting into the minutia, maybe a little bit of what it could possibly be, but I I think maybe if we went to wording along that. You know, uh if something in that that avenue where we could talk about the barrier free. Commitment can be very costly and may not be fully required to a hundred percent of the units. It may be required depending on grant funding or different things, it could be maybe a portion has to service a certain amount of full barrier free. But um senior, maybe something more along the lines of, you know, one level, senior friendly. Uh would give us some flexibility to explore um some of those options uh without. Kind of pigeonholing us into a specific style of housing, which can get really difficult with countertop heights and. Things inside closets, and I I think we might just be getting too far into into some of the details, even though I'm the one that brought up barrier frame or that. But I think if we go down, maybe if if that a friendly amendment perhaps to just add that senior friendly. Uh might be enough direction, I'm not sure if that's would be reasonable.
Okay, thank you councillor chambers, so councillor host is a request for a friendly amendment to add seniors friendly to the motion?
Yeah, I I think that's, I I again appreciate the the input on, yeah, is it costly? But this gives then a wide range of options that the administration and the contractor can look at. So yeah, I'm totally for leaving it as is and then, but also uh senior friendly. Our and senior friendly, uh just to capture that one level as well, because of the, with the report we had, that's all. So yeah, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you councillor host, if we could ask to have that change made and Mayor Nissen.
Thank you, through the chair to administration, um Mr. Voice, you had a a suggestion for the wording of what we're trying to describe here. Your words, it was repeatable, uh could you give me that description again?
Oh, sorry, uh yes, uh economically repeatable.
And you also mentioned uh something about the size.
Oh yes, we presented two scales, a small to medium scale solution. Again, I don't want to pigeonhole, you know, when we get so specific on anything, um we are, we're driven by what's what you task us to do. So a small, all the, small to mid scale senior solution.
Thank you.
Similar to what was presented. Thanks.
Mister voice. I think I'd like to propose an amendment. To see if we can get to where we want to be. Now I'm gonna do this as a, a regular amendment.
Yeah.
So I'd like to. amend the consensus to read that committee reached consensus that all housing considerations for the full development. Of the Bhutan lands. Are. Small to medium. Economically repeatable. No stair senior friendly design housing. Or stair free senior friendly design.
Let's make sure that's captured when we can have an opportunity to speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. Small to medium scale. Yeah, no stairs, senior friendly. I don't have a whole lot to speak to this. I, I think. We're just trying to nail in a motion that we're all, or a consensus that we're all on page for. Uh, so I'm interested to see if committees uh up for this wording or if we want to go in another direction. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be in support of this. Uh, it captures everything that we've talked about. Um, you know, and, and it gives them those that, that direction to our, to our contractors. So, cause I mean. Yeah, I'm, I'm good. I'm definitely.
Thank you. And I do have a follow up. Uh, just because it says all housing considerations and we are specifically talking about the non-apartment section of the Bhutan lands, I think.
Hmm.
From committee, I still have an interest in the apartment. Will this motion as it's written? Still allow for administration to consider an apartment section that wouldn't necessarily follow these rules. Obviously, apartment building is a little bit different. Or do we need to change this from all housing?
Uh, sorry, through the chair, is it worded to say all housing?
It says all housing considerations.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think. You know, I, I, I think it's fairly clear, just given the context that it's not referring to an apartment building, just given the, the parameters. So. I think we're okay if we want to be more specific, we can, but I think that's uh. Anybody reading this even from the outset would, would understand the, the contents.
Thank you. See, also through the chair, if I may make an amendment to my amendment, I, I would like it to read that all. Non-apartment housing considerations. Elevator. Thank, thank you, the chair and committee for helping me uh work this morning.
Do you want to speak to it?
No, I think this captures what we need to capture.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I would like to speak to proposed direction. And the part that I was looking forward to having come forward is the small to medium scale part. I think that's an important consideration uh based on the demographics in the community. I think. This, this exercise, a similar exercise was undertaken once in the past. And it was basically put to the community, like, what's your wish list? Which was a mistake, because it came back with, you know, large size granite countertops, all the bells and whistles real hardwood. And then her door cost was not feasible. And I think we want to make sure that we don't, we're not making that mistake this time. I think the per door cost has to be in line with what. The seniors in our community are, are willing and able to pay, and I think this helps to capture that. So thank you for the, for the proposed amendment, Mayor Nissen. Okay, anything further? Okay, there's nothing else from committee. We've all called question. The uh, direction, the committee amend motion. That all non-apartment housing considerations are small to medium scale, no stair senior friendly design. Many people please vote now. Okay, that is carried unanimously. So that amendment now forms part of the original motion. So we could do that through the original one, please. Okay, maybe we now have the original motion, listing and then included. Any comments, questions, any other changes and committee would like to see? Council House?
I do have one question, cause. One of the things, and I, I appreciate the, you know, th- this looking at a, a, a cost effective, but one of the things that. We did here along granite countertops and all that was gracious, but I'm wondering. You know, with this option, and again, maybe it's not through that no stair rule, but. Having an underground parking. Potentially under these units. Which then could also increase the capacity of how many units we could have. Is that a feasible option at all? For not maybe all of units, but. Any thoughts on that?
If I may through the chair, uh, un- underground, anything is very expensive.
Yeah.
And it is going to increase the first quarter. Because then we're trying to minimize and specifically if we were to go. With the, with different funding applications, uh, they are looking at first perfect cost in terms of uh. How reasonable they are. So I would, my opinion is that anything about padding underground is going to be making it really expensive.
Yeah.
So, yeah, sorry. Excuse me, so. To all of committee, just to add to what Dravie was saying, you know, if you look at the constraints of the site that we looked at. Um, you know, there's certain stipulations how close we could get to the side of ways. So to have that entry exit point. Is going to be challenging to say the least, and then of course, there, that's a bit of cost to do that. Okay.
Sure enough. Thank you. Appreciate that. Good.
Yeah.
Through the chair, maybe a question for presenters as well, but we, we spoke of. And we're speaking about the, the Monday sources. There are some funding sources that stipulate that we would be going. Or it would be a component of about thirty percent. Um, considered affordable, even there was other grant funding that was. That did not have that requirement. I believe that we spoke about this topic at one point in time, we were, we were talking about a market development. Um, especially considering that we would have to be involved on likely on the affordable side, but. Is there a preference for including an affordable? And when I say affordable, uh. I'm really talking about the definition through. Provincial federal governments, uh, but is there an interest in including that as? One of the components of this development, because I think that will narrow down the funding sources that we have. Is that fair, is that fair to?
Yeah, yeah. So Derek, you wanted to say something on that?
Yeah, the concept of affordability is very different depending on which program, so, which also may align better or worse for you financially. I might suggest you leave that door open still till we hear what comes back through the budget. Once we, now that we know the product, it's fairly straightforward to test through the two different program, through the two more likely programs. I, I'd, I'd wait for more information on that.
So after that, if you must know, the affordable housing fund has much more stringent than the apartment construction loan program. They do have uh different requirements, but as Derek said, uh, you should wait for what comes out with everything in the fall budget and if there is any changes. So it's uh, it was affordable requirements.
Yeah. Yeah. You, you may pivot for financial reasons versus affordability ranges, reasons, so. Don't close the doors.
Okay, thank you for that additional information and clarification. Uh, so the committee, if, if there's. Suggestions being put out for additional changes that might be made. I don't know if committee wants to make a. A catchall direction to administration that encompasses everything, but one of the things we haven't talked about is. Is what committee's intent for administration to focus on in terms of density would be.
Hmm.
Are we looking to maximize density? Are we looking to prioritize green space? What, how would we like for administration to move forward from a density perspective? I know for myself, just in terms of affordability, cost management and the con tech- technologies. I would like to focus on. Thinking in maximizing density while still ma- making sure that is the reasonable amount of. Of green space, but I think it's important to try and keep these units affordable and accessible for our seniors. That we do try to maximize the density as much as possible. And Councilor Ross, Councilor Magu, and I think it's somewhere missing as well, yeah, so.
You were, kind of read my mind, cause uh, following this, I was going to make a direction around that, because. One of my concerns, and, and again, I know these are changeable, but it had a community center or a senior center, and I think. In my mind, we've got good companions, we have bridges, we have the seniors lodge next door. I think this area needs to be housing, so I appreciate that and I, I, I definitely concur. Uh, you know, cause I, I think we do need to maximize the economic part and the density. Um, and I think, yes, we need some green space in there, but you know, that we can. Compensate with having other amenities in there and just focus on everything. So. I agree with you. I don't know if we want to encompass it in this or it'd be a separate one, but I, I concur. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Ross, Councilor Magu.
Yeah, just to keep it short. Yeah, I would agree. I think medium to high density, really it's all about increasing the number of seniors that we can help in this area.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mayor Nissen and then Councilor Chambers.
Yeah, so through the charity committee, uh, I'm interested in having this discussion, but in a different motion.
Hmm.
Uh, I think there's a couple of layout uh pieces on, on this property that we should discuss. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Chambers?
I can wait till after this motion for my comments as well, please. Just keep, I'll stay in the queue.
Maybe if there's nothing else uh in terms of this particular direction, we will call question. The committee reached consensus that all non-apartment housing considerations are small to medium scale, no stairs, senior friendly design housing. Will you, could please vote now? Guys carried unanimously. Thank you. Councilor Chambers?
Thank you, uh, through the chair. So the, the one thing I think we need to bring up, talking about the density side of things is, um. I don't know that I have a motion in my head, but we need to talk about the future of what that apartment building or a multi-level. Um, style unit could be. And I think also in line with that, um, as much as we want to do the medium to hu- to high density, I, I do kind of agree with, with that in theory. That community space is critically important close by for seniors. Um, not necessarily senior center, full blown in, in that sense, but some of that green space area, that walking trails, maybe that, you know. Connectivity to, to different areas. I think we don't want to lose that, um, when they're at that stage, they're, they're sticking close to home. Um, you know, and their walks and, and their ability to get together in, in groups and that little sense of community is quite critical. So, um, I just want to make sure that we don't lose that apartment building, especially when we talk about. Some of these hypothetical affordability things that could come out through the federal budget process, different things like that, um, that apartment building could be a key. Or whatever I want to call it, could be a key player in, um, achieving some of that mixed market affordability pieces. That again, I, I don't think we want to tie ourselves too closely to at the moment, but, um. I think exploring what that, um, apartment complex could be, um. And yes, you know, Pine Valley is close to that area, but they. Have a pretty full building as it is, right? So you start to bring a whole other community in there. That's, that's still kind of, you know, s- some events, sure, and some. And some trails, but I, I do think having a bit of a. Common space within an apartment building, et cetera, could be something that could serve, serve quite well, but I don't know, maybe. Maybe Mayor Nissen has a nice motion to come out of all my nattering.
Uh, thank you, Council Chambers, Mayor Nissen.
Uh, thank you. Through the charity committee, uh, uh, council chambers brought some good points about what an apartment building maybe should or should not include. Uh, but I want to talk about the apartment building in terms of the location and, and space on the lot. So as we look at our three options, we've got options A, B, and C. Options A and B show an apartment building uh adjacent to Drennan Way, so kind of the west end of the, the property. Uh, option C shows the apartment buildings on the northern edge of the property. Um. My personal preference is I look at the, the area down there. I like the location of the, uh, option C apartment buildings. Uh, much more than options A and B, in large part for just access to the views. And they'll, they'll look and feel that here, but the Bhutan uh land neighborhood there. It's got a really interesting look to it with the views, the mountains, the fields, everything, and I think that this neighborhood would be really shortchanged if we were to put up. Uh, an apartment building, a four-story apartment building at the end of the Bhutan lands on Drennan Way. Block those mountain views for all those seniors in Pine Valley that we just put in. Whereas if we were to put those apartment buildings on the north edge of the lot as shown in option C. There's no blocking of the views. That area is uh built up with hills and trees that's used to the north. Uh, and then having grade level seniors housing all in front of those Bhutan lands could make a very nice, attractive neighborhood that looks good in our community. And so the consensus I'd like to put on the floor is that, um. That committee direct administration to. Work with layouts. That place the apartment. Building at the north end of the available lands or on the north side of the building. And then I think we'll probably have a discussion about the remainder of the lens for density, but uh. I, I think looking at these plans, I think we can give some clear direction here as to what's most desired for the community. When that comes up, we'll check and.
That's good.
Thank you, Mayor Nissen. So maybe we do have a direction request. All that's your questions?
I do have a question in regards to, cause I definitely agree with the view and everything, but I guess my question goes back to. Um, parking, uh, cause parking is always a big deal, right? And I, I look at the, the one where it's not on the north side, it's on, on the west side. Um, is it the intent that the parking would be all that, say, white area in front of that? So where is the intent to put the parking on the north? Cause I don't see anything. That looks like any parking. So I think part of my question is also about that underground part of things, so. Oh, that's where it goes. Oh, I, I apologize. Okay, there it is. So for the white area, but, but, okay, um. So there's enough area there to do parking and, and everything, because going underground is not an option. Obviously, it's just the cost wise, so.
Well, you, through the chair. You could, but it, it takes away a lot of area in providing those tax ramps in and out.
Okay.
Uh, right now to the east, there's a whole block which has been allocated in this option C for, for parking.
Check.
So that should be, uh, you know, I mean, this is, this is a very preliminary model as you go through. Details, you will find more space on the site, but uh, I, I believe uh strongly that an underground option. It's not terrible. Derek, you wanted to add on a challenge?
Ravi? Yeah, Ravi, you were reminding me that option C had the flexibility to go either way due to the.
Lost.
Right, right away, if you could afford, due to the right away, you basically have stranded land. And it provides a natural positioning for surface parking as well. If, uh, it just gives you, it kind of keeps that option open. Cause it's unlikely. Or less like you, likely. That for buildings on the other side of the right away, the, the vertical utility right away.
I may add also that in this option, I placed two blocks. They, you know, they could be one single block which occupies the third of the area, which is should, should be enough. Uh, what I was trying to play with here is that so what all can accommodate in different settings, so it is definitely possible to accommodate parking as is. Uh, and it is also ideal because there is a parking lot or pine valley lot on the other side. So it kind of integrates well if you have a little bit of walking trails to kind of address that previous question of. Leaving a little bit of landscape area by densifying it, so there are possibilities. Leaving a little bit of landscape area by densifying it, so there are possibilities, that does make ideas. Obviously, when when the the real architects come into play, they can they can think about it and uh. Go through that exercise.
I'm in favor, thank you.
No additional ones or questions from, maybe a little called question. That maybe direct administration to work with layouts that place the apartment building on the north side of the available lands. Please hold them. Short recess?
It'd be great.
Okay, we'll recess for five minutes, we'll be per day at six thirty seven. All right, we will call today's uh, maybe the whole meeting back to work. We are still on item sixty-one, Bhutan Land Seniors Housing Concept Review. Maybe, I think further we'd like to discuss. Councillor Ross.
Um I'd like to seek consensus that this area uh be medium to high density. Yeah, I'd like to speak to it, you know, I think medium to high density gives, uh first of all. You know, the the economic value in that area with getting as many units as we can. Was still having the green space, as as councillor Chambers had mentioned, I mean, it's. Still, I think leaves room for some green space in that area, and I I apologize for sending everybody over to Pine Valley. Uh but uh, you know, but uh, yeah, I I think we have enough amenities in our community. To still utilize them and the the in that area even, you know, when I look at good companions, isn't very far, it's in that in that valley district. Uh you know, uh so I think that that's the best value for this area, so uh yeah.
Just from administration's perspective, is there anything, I know what I think medium to high density means, but I also know that I don't work for the town. So is there anything about medium to high density in fact that we should know about, or it sounds like we're misinterpreting?
Through the chair to members of the committee, maybe you would help to tie it to one or uh. One of the options in the presentation, because you know, my interpretation of. Higher density is really option A, which is kind of where the the medium density, where. Still looks at things in relatively close proximity, but it has a lot of area for green space. Versus option C is, I would consider the highest density. Um option B being the lowest density, where it's more more about uh, you know, larger style homes. A lot of green spaces, community amenities, but you know. Listening to the conversation, I think that we're. I think we're talking about more of the density in option A, is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, I speak to that, actually for myself, I'm actually more in favor of uh option C, that higher density.
Yeah.
Uh and for myself, it's. I don't, again, I don't mean to sound delicate, I think if we're not serving a good number of our uh seniors. Then really all we're doing is taking a token action, you know, if we just make a a small lovely little development that only serves. Thirty to forty individuals, we're not really making a dent in the problem, right, we're just doing something that looks nice. Looking at option C, I still see some green, and I I understand it's just, uh it's just the design, right? It's it's just some paper, but something like that, I I think with the at-grade houses. Yeah, I think that's kind of what I'm thinking of, thank you.
So to to administration, for councillor Ross, and would you be looking for an amendment to motion to kind of indicate? Maybe which of us options would it range with?
Through the chair and members of the committee, I think that'll be helpful, just because when we're talking about densities, just looking at the designs, I think will be. Would be beneficial for for everybody to understand the scale of the density of our adoption.
Uh so I'll go to councillor Ross and then councillor Chambers and then Mayor Nissen.
Um so I'd like to amend my, to amend my motion to uh that committee reached consensus. To this area, the medium to low identity referring to uh option C uh as a reference.
The boss is that, uh looking for?
Yeah, that's the one, yeah, and I'll quickly speak to it, I think because we've also gone to that grade level. Versus the, you know, it 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 decreases the amount of space, which we need to then accommodate more units. You know, when I think C uh, you know, accomplishes that um with, you know, when you said when we get all the engineers and architects involved. Re- recognizing that green space, if we can make it work, great, you know, but uh, yeah, I I feel the same way as councillor. We need to, we need to give as much as in there, you know, and and not just be a, but to to make to make a dent in that in the senior housing, so. Thank you.
Councillor House, or councillor Chambers and then Mayor Nissen.
Uh thank you through the chair, I'll I'll be in support of this motion, I I think with the other previous motions that we made, well, this one has the. Apartments on the north side, I think, if I'm looking at the plan correctly. Um and if it still takes into consideration, obviously, having the the grade level housing, I think this is a good option. Uh community spaces can still be within that apartment building, and I think it's also in response to what we clearly heard through the um. Public hearing process for their other green spaces, it was a direct question of, you know, the density and the use of. The Bhutan lands, what are we, what are we doing with that, and so I I think getting the density that we can, um and this this was a purpose. Purposeful purchase um on account of council at the time, um and I think maximizing that. Uh for our future planning, whatever the phasing of this could look like, it could be, you know, obviously, multiple phases, all those things will be yet to be seen and based on different funding, but. I think the planning of it in this lens of of option C um makes the most sense for for me as well. So happy to support the motion as it stands.
Thank you, and through the charity committee, I'm gonna take a crack at making amendments, because I. I support this motion of what we're trying to do, but I don't like the wording of it, I'm concerned about the medium to high density housing as as wording. We're we're talking about grade level, small, you probably ultimately classify as low density housing from a municipal timing perspective. Ultimately, and I'm concerned that I'm gonna read these minutes a year from now and be confused. Uh so this amendment I'd like to propose is a committee reached consensus that the non-apartment area. Be designed to maximize the number of at-grade units. Wait, we've got a heading here, I'll I'll speak to it briefly, I also am a little bit concerned about the the reference to option C. Uh I think we've we've referenced option C a lot, uh but I am concerned about the the planners taking that that design and really sticking to it. In in a hard way, and I think if you look at the lens and you come at it from a perspective of we want. Small to medium sized at-grade units in a maximum capacity in apartment on the north side. Uh I think that that gives a nice set of boundaries for our planners to to go ahead and look through, sorry, here it is, committee amend the motion to reach. Consensus of the non-apartment area being designed to maximize the number of at-grade units. That'll do, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Nissen, so maybe we do have a an amendment request on the on the table. I appreciate Mayor Nissen's attempt to try to bring some more clarity to the direction that committee is giving. From my perspective, though, if we look at it through a lens of somebody that wasn't involved in this meeting at all and has no. Understanding of the discussion that happened, to me, that means the whole thing is housing and parking. Because it just says maximize the number of great upgrade units, great mobile units. It doesn't speak at all to any of the green space, our discussion, my understanding, our discussion, there was there was a balance. You actually wanted high density, but still have the opportunity for some green street, green space in the development. And this doesn't speak to that at all, it's just maximizing uh grade level movements. Mayor Nissen, do you want to speak to that?
I would like to speak to that, thank you, Chair, and through the charity committee, uh this motion does not mention green space. However, the report has mentioned numerous times, this is a complicated piece of land with a number of railways, and we cannot build housing on every part of it. So I'm anticipating that a maximized design will still have roughly the same amount of green space as option C. Perhaps in slightly different locations and and whatnot, but I would be shocked if we got a plan back that was only housing and parking, even with this. Uh direction, because I, as I understand it, that land cannot be developed in that way. So, but I am open to uh new wording if if we need to argue against that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Marison. Okay. Nothing else for the committee, we'll call it question, the direction request, the committee amend the motion. To reach consensus that the non-apartment area be designed to maximize the number of at grade units. Committee, if you could please vote now. This carried unanimously, so that will become the wording of the original motion. So maybe we'll be going back to the original motion, motion with this wording, any comments, questions or changes? What to say for that to come back up then is the motion? Okay, we have been amended direction requests in force. Uh once more, is there any comments, questions or changes that committee would like to see? Okay, so now we'll call the question, that committee reached consensus that the non-apartment area be designed to maximize the number of at grade units. Maybe you could please vote now. It's carried unanimously, thank you. Any questions we want to do with this?
Just a question for uh administration, so assuming there's. Nothing else of substance that changes, uh when would council expect approximately? Uh the next steps sort of occur and what would that look like?
Look to the chair, to all of the committee, uh the next step would really be for us to. Hope that the fall intake or any granting publication is available for us to evaluate to see what can fit. Some of the groundwork that you've done, so that is number one, parallel to that, we will also be undertaking the needs demand assessment. And we can then bring that back to council in the meanwhile, if if the granting is available, can think it did there was a package. And we hope that before the end of this council's term. That we could say to your okay, here's a package that you could take forward and you could budget for in twenty twenty six. I I I want to preface that as well, that the G O A is supposed to bring several units, twenty plus units. And when that has had its lifespan in terms of people moving back to Jasper, that will become stock that we could own again. And that would be ready for seniors, so I think the needs assessment will have some impact to evaluating, you know, is our need a hundred fold right now? And with that may become eighty fold, so that will help us with a massing exercise for at grade as well as what the apartment, we'll get to the apartment. Uh aspect, we'll be getting to the core housing in the next hour or so, four minutes, I should say. Um but I I do have, if I want to have the floor, Mr. Chair, a question for council. And 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 I'm not being dismissive here about anything, I think it's a very important question we need to ask ourselves. Um when we did this report, we focused on the minimal out of pocket cost. That the retailer taxpayer should be paid for any future development tax. Realizing if we paid for it, servicing, we paid, we saved some money on it a year or two ago. But isn't this council's appetite? That should there be a shortfall that we're willing to put in X value? To get this project going, meaning that if they ease that appetite, we can actually then get a P three together. Other than just the land component, so it's a very important aspect that we need to, because we've got competing needs in the community, you've got infrastructure, you've got a rock center. And this also involves into your future demands for funding play.
And just before we get it back to committee, then would would that be? Some type of direction request that the administration would be looking for? What 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 type of direction from committee would you be working for?
I'm going to lean on the C L for for the final direction, but where where I'm really coming from as a one that is spearheading this project. Is that it'd be good for us to, and I'm not asking council tonight to say it's gonna be five within or having within, it's simply a. A portion of your skin in the game, besides land and the servicing, if the G O A comes to report us, they'll be servicing that main track. We will have to dialogue into that's part of our servicing cost, but the cost that we're talking about as Ravi is indicating, it's gonna cost us four million to do ten minutes. Would council be willing to say, you know what, we will put in X value when those numbers are gel and solidified? That's basically the direction that council would be based on the model, based on the best for to the community, that there would be a a final look at skin regain being. Not a number today, but at least a monetary value will be attached.
Yeah, thank you, so I'm gonna give it back to committee and maybe just keeping in mind uh Director Russo's question. Councillor House, councillor Magoon and councillor Chambers. What's there else?
Yeah. It's not in response to this, but I'm just gonna ask it before real quick. We've talked all about the non-apartment area, Ravi and your team, do you need some direction on the apartment? On this, at this stage?
I don't believe so, I mean, right now we have presented us what the possibilities are and explained where the funding landscape is at right now. It is for the committee and the council to give us directions, so what do you want to do with with the entire site, our project was to start off with. The ten unit townhouse project. And then also show based on the assets, what else is possible on site. So. Okay, I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll start us, then we'll start reviewing, then councillor Chambers.
So speaking to uh Director Russo's question, yes. But in short, uh my question back to administration and then the C Ls, what would that direction look like for council? That we would be willing to explore some of those financial options, what would you think?
Through the chair, and I might need to confirm with uh. Director Russo as well, but. You know, I think if we have. A a motion. That we bring that back at some point in time to look at or to discuss it maybe in further detail about our financial commitments, because I don't think we didn't have a. A detailed discussion about that right now, but a a motion to come back and have a discussion about what, you know, is there a number or is there? You know, is there other ways that we want to participate in this project further to what we talked about about the land and so it's a thing and those spent in things, but I think if we. Put that on the books, we can come back and we can have that discussion when we're a little bit more prepared.
Follow then, Mr. Chair, so then does that need a a motion from council, or is it the intention of it being just through the agenda? Committee, agenda prep committee to bring that forward to a future?
Uh through the chair, if we could have a motion on that, uh then we could prepare for that, because I do believe that that would require a report uh as well, so.
Do you want to make that motion? There you go.
I don't have it ready, sir. But I'll work on.
Okay. And in the meantime, you mind if I go to councillor Chambers, big councillor Chambers?
Thank you, um through the chair, I think that. What I see and and based on the presentation is that I do think that this potential hypothetical um. Whether it's financial or or risk based or whatever that is, I think a lot of that information is gonna come through based on the program that we end up. Chasing depending on what is out there from the province, from the feds, from different partnerships, etcetera, so um I think supporting a motion that. I think as council, we need to be prepared to understand that the likelihood of us having no skin in this game is slim to none, if we want to move this ahead. I think that that's a recognition we need to make, but I I also think, again, we don't want to get too prescriptive on what that looks like. Because depending on the different um. Avenues that are out there for for development, for funding, for partnerships, whatever that is. It could look very different in very different ways and it could look very different, very different phases, so I think if there's. A motion that comes ahead that that acknowledges that we need something brought back to us to understand what some of these options might be for how. The municipality partners long term into this or or helps move this development. I think it's a a wise spot for us to be in to to bring that back, but I do think it's a fulsome discussion that. Will take a while to come back because we have to. Get these guys to plan this out and then see what's out there in the. The world of financing and. How that could look going forward, but. I'll I'll wait for council, councillor Magoon's a well typed motion.
We councillor Chambers? Any, council, we're doing?
Uh I think, Mr. Chair, I'd like to uh seek consensus. Okay, to direct administration. To bring back. A report. Regarding options. For council to explore. Financial options to support. The buildout of the Bhutan lands development. Uh just very briefly, I I'm not seeking to pigeonhole us regarding any specific uh sort of avenue. Uh does say options, so really is, you know, whatever administration might think. Would work in this this way to promote and support, whether it be something like a a triple P. Or, you know, us us developing essentially the underground. To make it easier to do the above ground, whatever, I'm I'm certainly open, but I'm, you know, out of the box. Yeah, looks good to me.
Thank you, so do you, okay, please, would you know the direction request before us, or any comments or questions? So I would have a comment, I I'm gonna support this. But but I'm supporting it with the understanding that whatever financial commitment. That council makes at some point in the future is going to support. Either either expediting a process. Ideally, it would be expediting and providing additional. Affordability of the units to the seniors who are ultimately going to wind up paying them. Um I certainly wouldn't be interested in council committing taxpayer dollars to. Provide service and provide a lot that does nothing to enhance the affordability of the set of subsidies, whoever the no over the lines of being. Any? Okay, say nothing further from committee, though. House committee to vote to seek consensus to direct administration to bring back the report. Regarding options for council to explore financial options to support the buildout of the Bhutan lands development. And if you could please vote now. It's carried unanimously, thank you. We need anything further on item six? If nothing further for six point one, we will move on to six point two. Operator posing background information. Anything else? Administration.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair, back to committee, uh this report was before you this evening, emanating from a notice of motion that council raised made on June the seventeen. And she's honored to, and with the backing of council, of course, and that's why we hear this even if. Still look at what are the possibilities of a co-op housing uh structure? Could that fit the town of Hinton? Is the timing right? Is the model correct? And is are there any funding available? The 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 short answer is is that C M H C does have funding that lends itself to co-op housing. And if you keep up with the ground, the feds have recently really promoted this by various places, where you have, you know, co-op housing, it's the Paris seal to everything else. Uh I would be careful to say that if he's the leading to everything. It's one tool, one mechanism that is a good to look at. And if you look at co-op housing, look at the history of co-op housing, back in the seventies, early eighties, it really was a thing. Why? Because there was funding put behind it. And what style of uh co-op housing, it was mostly in the form of low housing, um high rise, so if you go to Tram. A dirty region and all of those those sectors out on the eastern side of Lake Ontario, you'll see that they've got. A good solid co-op housing sort of structure in place, so it works. And so why are we here tonight is to say that there are options that we could look at, funding is available, could be in the form of a forgivable loan. Or could be in the form of a granting opportunity, depends on how we slice and dice them. Uh earlier on, you saw the slide that um Ravi showed us. That what a cooperative is, you know, it's it's not, there's no, it's it's not tenants, it's basically you are. Are you're like a shareholder, you buy into it. And now that buying component could be a cost costly for somebody that goes to get into level housing, yeah, potentially for those that are most in need. And geared to income, so what happens is that you, we as a municipality, we need to understand this from the get go. We cannot access the funding through C M H C as a municipality, a not-for-profit pad. And so one of the things that if this is an appetite of council and this is the the idea to move forward. Then we could solicit in our community, who would be interested to be part of this co-op? And then manage it with the municipality playing a really strong role in terms of helping with the bylaws, helping with the approval process, even supporting the loan application. To C M H C or even writing it for them as a non-profit as part of administration's capacity and capabilities. That's one we are doing, but we cannot operate a co-op nor do we have any say in that. So there's various mechanisms that, you know, we own the land right now. Perhaps it's our own plan, we could lease it for a period of sixty years. The issue with that is once the lease comes up, put renewal, what are the conditions and how do we really negotiate those things? And the other part is is that, you know, a co-op is is a legal entity that needs to be registered, that is a company, they've got to do their financials every year. And they gotta be above board about what they do, so the 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 nice thing about this is if I want to talk about the pros. Is that you can actually have people that can, they can be there as long as they want to, as long as they pay their dues, there's a monthly duty paid, which they set as the ball. Because if you're a shareholder or a member, you actually control that rent increase or not. You also ensure that the maintenance kept up, so that the certain standards are kept. So it's not like a landlord approach where you could be evicted if you're late one day with your rent, of course, there are. Aspects where you have to comply with the agreement that you signed to the co-op agreement. That being said, the tenancy act does not apply to a co-op, they have their own rules and regulations, which kind of limits. If you're not paying and in three shots you're out and, you know, eventually that that's how they deal with it. So. It's it's a diverse inclusive community that can be part of this. And and I want to go back to, and this is why I kind of held my peace before I. Bring it in here, when we looked at the apartment block on the Bhutan lands. And you look at the demographics that could potentially fit the co-op application for loans or forgivable grants. That could be one option that the town could say, you know what, we're gonna ring fans that northern portion we talked about as for co-op. Can be three to four stories, because our fire uh firefighting walls can go up to four stories, so four stories could work. We could have seniors focus at the ground floor level. As an example, doesn't mean that it has to, you could have a community facility in on the first floor or part of the ground floor. And so you could have the total integration with seniors. And a demographic that is in need of houses, so when we do the needs assessment, we'll actually see that come out very strong, what our demographic leans out. Because right now, we know there's a need in Hinton, but we really can pinpoint, is it thirty percent? And those that are earning twelve dollars an hour as an example, although that's low, or is it simply those that, you know. Those are working or just can't be housed right now because it's hard to expect, so to even more to find a rent to live in, it's another exercise that doesn't work. So in in short, um. The feds are really putting their money behind the top side of things. So but before we can go there, we we need to understand that it's a legal entity that needs to be set up, now, there's educational um opportunities, you know, there's a website that was shared with you by the C L. Something came from the cooperatives, I mean, what do they call themselves, um. Uh I lost it right now, but there's a group that actually will show you how to set up a co-op. And if they would come and do a presentation for you, they will then help you once you have that group. So in short, I just wanted to stop and say that, you know, co-op housing in in the future is possible. And there's a bunch of stuff, federal funding amounts are available, uh a newly found or existing not-for-profit organization needs to be operating this and maintaining it. Um options for access to municipal areas such as leasing the land, I talked about that, we could facilitate that with the bylaws. And you could also have a partnership with a not-for-profit and an entity that is a not a non non profit. And then they can run it together and they can gear it to incomes, they can. And then they can run it together and they can gear it to incomes, they can gear it to profit bargains um based on the model. So in in conclusion, I I think council, um there is a potential, that was the question that was the ask for us. Uh you all have this report in front of you, I really run through it very quickly. But I just wanted to throw it open to the table to see what council's thoughts are and what you'd like us to do beyond this.
Yeah, well, you. Counselor, we do any further comments?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to say the recommended action, uh that committee reached consensus regarding in, or pardon me, requesting administration. To solicit local parties interested in participating in the establishment of a cooperative housing legal entity, thank you.
Counselor, you really do want to speak to it?
No, no, I'm good.
Counselor House?
Yeah, I I I'm really in favor of this. Um I have had a couple of conversations with people that have mentioned that co-op uh, you know, possibility. Um and and specifically in the realtor world uh is where the conversation was. But I I think that, you know, uh your comment to the the demand assessment, how that will contribute. If we could, you know, knowing that knowing that that's happening. Soliciting potential people that might be interested, you know, maybe we can get them thinking about it. And then when that that demand assessment comes forward, that might give them some more um. Support or not support to to uh investigate it further, so I think it's an option to consider for sure. Um I'm not sure if the Bhutan lens is the option or another one, but I think it's definitely something to 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 look into. Uh and you know, we're we're we're. I feel like this is, you know, we we're trying new things in the world of our housing and this is another option to us, so thank you.
Counselor House, sorry, CEO.
Uh intended chair to the rest of the committee, um. Sure, I know this recommended action ultimately does come through me, but um just one recommendation is maybe to specify. Maybe specify purpose for if we're looking for cooperative, because is our interest in the cooperative model or is our interest in any specific. Um segment of housing. Uh or are we looking at, are we casting a very wide net to see who in the community would be interested in doing this? Um, you know, because I just want to make sure that we're looking at this. Topic in the right context of is this for seniors housing, because we've been speaking a lot about it. Or or other types of housing.
Okay, thank you for that, uh CEO, so Counselor Chambers, myself, Mayor Nissen, Counselor Goon, Counselor House.
I thank you through the chair, um to CEO Panastic's point, I I think the intention as far as what I understood of this. Was to cast a very large net. Um, you know, I think it's who who is who is interested in this, is it? Is it nonprofit groups, is it individual businesses that are looking for housing, is this a way for, you know, just. Moderate income people within the community to to be living in in different places, I think that, you know, you can look at lots of different models, but. The way I read the motion is that we would be looking at a at a wide. Um breadth of of potential options and then going from there that we wouldn't be, I don't see this necessarily as just seniors, but I I don't know that I would want to. Tighten this up too much because it could, there there's a pretty big variety of housing needs that we have and some that are coming up fairly swiftly. Um, you know, with some some different pressures with some of the industrial expansion that we have going on. Um, and I think there could be a lot of interesting options out there, so I I kind of like the the who is interested. Um, because I think there there could be some things that we haven't thought about and I I think it gives us. Yeah, some opportunities to see see what's out there and and who's interested in being a player in the game personally.
For Chambers, uh myself, Mayor Nissen, Counselor Goon, Counselor House.
For myself, I I'm uncertain about this one, to be honest, I I'm struggling a little bit. To understand what the benefits of cooperative ownership are. Over a conventional rental apartment or a condominiumized development. I'm I may be missing something. Um, but I see that there are potential challenges in getting a co-op together and set up. And I'm not really understanding what the potential advantages could be over over condominiumized development. Uh I think it might be challenging to get a nonprofit together, who's going to to. Uh take this and run with it. I'm assuming a lot of the challenges that were presented to us tonight in a like lease option would apply in this as well in terms of the. Legalities of it, getting the investors on board. Collecting funding from them upfront to help finance if it's a new construction or even if it's a purchase. To uh to finance the purchase of the property. So as of this point, I'm a little concerned about sending administration off to to. To divide their attention on something where I really don't understand what the benefit would be. So I don't know if administration can speak to that, but as of right now, I'm not sure I would support this direction.
Mayor Nissen, I have you in queue, and then Councilor Goon, Counselor House.
Uh thank you, and through the shared committee, I'll uh I'll speak a little bit to Council Statik's comments, I've been looking at the cooperative model for. Uh some time now, as councils made it very clear that we want to develop housing in our community and we have some significant development needs on the industrial side. Uh that are going to need housing developments in the future. Specifically, the advantage of the co-op housing structure. Versus a purpose-built rental that's privately developed by a developer or the condominium model is simply the funding available from the federal government. So what the federal government is doing with the uh Canada Housing Development Program and uh future announcements potentially on co-op housing is they're providing through CMHC. Upfront financing for purpose-built rentals that are structured as a co-op in a particular way. And when Director Russo says it has to be a nonprofit that runs it, that is the co-op itself. So the way that a municipality like ours can support. A co-op, and it's different than what we could do for a private developer or a condo, is we can provide uh no costs, deferred costs. Or land trust provided land. So the big one is we have municipal lands. And the co-op financing models through CMHC require that the co-op take one draw to finance their bill. So they need to defer the cost of the land from upfront so that they don't have to deal with any financing. And then they need to get the building built on spec, but if they can do those two things. They can get hundred percent financing from CMHC into all of their purpose-built rental program. It's the only housing model where that's the case that I'm aware of today, and that is the advantage of the co-op model. Now, from a municipal standpoint, we have municipal lands. Uh from our standpoint, we just went through a process to rezone two oh one, uh we left two oh one about a hundred ninety mile an hour drive and then those lots on Roman Street. If we were to say identify some of those one or or multiple of those lots as potentially viable for a co-op. We could put them up uh as available to a co-op, we could sell them to a co-op with a deferred payment so that the co-op can go get their financing. Uh we could choose to put all of those lands in a trust and provide them to a co-op under a a certain set of terms. Uh we have a lot of freedom to support. But with a co-op that starts with a steering committee. And this is how it starts, you start with a steering committee, so you bring interested parties together, you call an organization called Cooperatives First out of Saskatchewan. And they're fully structured to set up and do all of the legal work behind getting a co-op up off the ground, so it can be very low cost. Uh and there's a lot of support in getting these up off the ground. But the most important factor about supporting a co-op from my standpoint is a municipality. Is once we've supported it to get it up off the ground, the municipality needs to play no role whatsoever. So we can stipulate some conditions uh on the the land. Or the uh the gifting of the land, if that's what we so chose to do, so there's an example of Banff that's recently done called the Aster. And the municipality provided the land and what they got out of that was uh a fixed sale price for the units that is uh that appreciates at two percent per annum. And so what they've done is they've effectively guaranteed that the units that they sell today or or provide today in the co-op. Uh tomorrow, when they're moved along, they're gonna move along at a rate that people in the community who work in the community, who make their money in the community, will still be able to afford. The unit in the community. Uh as you can imagine, this has meant that they're deeply affordable units, they're very nice looking, uh they had a huge waitlist and they needed a lottery. Uh to fill out all of or to determine which community members would have the opportunity uh to buy into these homes. Uh but again, municipality, once they've supported the buildout, they're no longer involved in it. And I really like that idea because I see a lot of municipal housing developments as uh just long-term moneypicks for communities. But if we could do something that supports a group in the community coming together, doing the work to put a a co-op together. And then build out their own housing and manage it for themselves in the future, much like some of the co-op developments we see in Jasper next door. Uh they're the deeply affordable units that uh people who work in the community, that live in the community and can continue to live that that high quality of life. And so that's the advantage of supporting a co-op from my perspective. To the CEO's uh question, I I think the broader we go, the better. Uh I know that we have interest from our large employers in supporting a cooperative steering committee. Uh I know that there's potential uh for our seniors co-op. But I don't know how much potential there is for that, we're gonna find that out in our next study going forward. Uh but I am interested in seeing just how many people and and how many different groups are interested in co-op housing if we were to put something out there. Thank you.
Mayor Nissen, else, what do you do?
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, building off of Mayor's comments, going back to, just as an example. Um, an individual case study that's been mentioned to me across a number of years was individuals with complex needs and special needs, and it's mentioned in the report. You know, there's a number of our citizens who have disabilities or complex needs. Who eventually, as they grow up in age, out of their parents' homes, they don't have options and they are forced to move to neighboring communities, you know, Edson, Edmonton, that sort of thing. So that just looking for an example of what a co-op may be able to offer around this. Is a group of individuals who could come together and buy in in order to build exactly that, exactly what they need, purpose-built. Um and it doesn't, it doesn't rely on, well, in order to be successful, we have to build X number of units. It's something that could be, you know, successful at a small scale. So it's, I think it's worth exploring and I respect Counselor Chambers' comments that just keeping it wide open gives those those interested parties in town a chance to break storm and. And maybe come to the table to say, you know, this is something we could do.
Counselor House?
Uh thank you, um. But for me, it's a it's a broad look at it, I I think that it, you know, co-ops have the opportunity where seniors can buy into it. Families can buy into it, you know, and I think one of the things with co-ops that I think some some members of our community would really see as an advantage. You go in a rent place, but you can't really do anything with it. You can't do anything, you know, you're 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 renting, whereas this, a co-op, my understanding is, is it's your unit. You you have bylaws you have to follow, but you can renovate it, you can do things to it to make it your own home. Uh it potentially could, as a reading here, could reduce the cost of living as well. As a homeowner, you know, you've got all the expenses where this, the more people that are in the co-op, the the costs go down. Um, you know, we're also that rent, you know, we hear a lot of times where the rent is so high and it's, you know, how can you control that? We can't, this, it, you know, seems like there's some opportunity there. Um, I do have, though, the only thing reservation I have is on those bylaws and rules, because, you know, um, I think we we we. Because let's say, for example, if employer buys a unit, you gotta make sure those bylaws allow that person, you know, to to live in there, you know? Because it may not be the owner of the place that's living there, maybe, and are they going to allow that? So there's, I think there's some things that, you know, the some stricter things that probably could be, uh, you know, but as long as the bylaws are 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 written well. And uh allow for that, but I just think it's another opportunity for our community to to look at a different venture of housing in our community. So I I I think we need to see first that there's an appetite and then, you know, build from there, so, yeah, thank you.
Counselor House, myself next to you, one of the questions that CEO Panastic asked is what is council's purpose for doing this? And from what I've gathered from the discussion so far, it seems like the intended purpose of council is to. Uh initiate some type of a development that's got a perpetual affordability component to it, so that. So so the cost, you know, the the two percent uh. Increase in, or maximum two percent increase in in value per year helps to keep it affordable. If that's the intention of committee, I think this would pit. Unfortunately, one of the other components that I think is important to consider in town is getting stuff to market quickly. And if that was an intent of committee, I don't think that could, this would achieve that. I think if that was the intent of council committee, incentivizing a developer. Could be done in in similar ways to this, we could provide land to a developer free. With the, you know, conditions placed on the land that's provided for free in terms of of development, buildout, in terms of per-door cost. So so the question again, I guess, goes back to what's the purpose, why do we want to do this? So I I was maybe coming at it from the wrong angle, I was coming at it from the angle of getting something to market quickly that can help with housing crunch. Help with the employers who were coming to us and continually saying that they don't have housing for their staff.
That, what, sorry, I just really respect what you brought up regarding the um. Trying to bring things to market quickly. If that that direction or consensus request came separately, I'd be full in support of something like that, so.
Counselor again. Committee, you can further?
Yes, there's nothing further from committee, we will call the question, the direction request that committee reached consensus. Requesting administration to solicit local parties interested in participating in the establishment of a cooperative housing legal entity. Let me think, please vote now. That is carried forward to one with myself voting yes. Any anything further for this one?
Counselor House?
Uh to Council Statics, you know, with with the bringing it to market quickly, you know, um. My assumption, and I guess that's where I'm going to clarity, but if we start to pull out their solicitors and local parties that are interested. That could be some things that also come up as to like, what is the town willing to do, like, is it the the land that puts and things like that? Is the intent that that would probably come out with some of this this interaction with those potential. Uh and that potential entity that would then be brought back to council for consideration, is that the intent or idea?
Yeah, to the chair, um I've been having a long time to think about it uh since our conversation, but. I think that that would be the intent, I think the first step is to understand if there are. Any individuals or groups who would be interested in doing this, even if it's with conditions, and I think those types of conditions will have to come at some point in time. I did want to address the just um also Magoon and Counselor Statik's comments, but we are going to be doing something very similar. Soon uh related to the infill land and the land that we as the town own. We are looking at. Hiring a realtor, the next conversation that has to have is the condition of. Uh that we want to place on those lands and and that can incorporate a lot of different things like incentives. Maybe less than market value or free land if we see the public benefit to whatever development that might be, so a lot of those conversations will be coming uh soon.
Thank you, thank you. Lady, any further? Okay, there's nothing to refer in six point two, we will move on to section seven, reporting seven point one, the last report. Sir, you know that, anything else?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Goon, nothing to report, sir. Counselor Chambers?
Nothing to report.
Anything to report from yourself as well, Mayor Nissen?
I don't have anything specific to report, but in the correspondence package, the Midtown Mary's caucus uh. Speaking points from the last meeting were there, if there are any questions, we'd be happy to.
Okay, any any questions for Mayor Nissen? Okay, so number one, I'm seven point two, CEO reporting in status report, CEO.
Thank you, Chair, I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Chair, I don't have anything else to add, but the monthly highlight report is included and if there's any questions, we'll do my best answer.
Okay, ready, questions, councillor House?
Yeah, just a couple of questions, uh, there was mention that, uh, the agreement, lease agreement has been established at the center. It, it, can you, uh, speak to who, uh, achieved that? Just so we know.
Uh, through the chair, I'll look to staff and I'm seeing a lot of. Yeah, yeah, uh, councillor McLaughlin had to, had to go, so I'm not sure, but I, I can, uh, send counsel a note on that.
That'd be great, okay. If I may, I have another question in that scene. Uh, so we've seen this multiple times and we're seeing more and more of it, like break-ins at ISB park satellite locations. And then now seeing intentional vandalism, Hinton Center campground. Um, how much is this costing us, just out of curiosity? Because I mean, I realize it's insurance more likely, but it's the time, it's the maintenance, it's the cleanup, it's the. What is it costing us to, to deal with all of these things?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I, I wouldn't be able to give you an accurate account of that. Uh, lots of things are insured, but we also had some cases where they're not, um. You know, whether it's deductible or whether they, you know, we've had things stolen that aren't necessarily insurable, so, um, but. Trying to come up with a cost of all the staff time related to dealing with the two, that I'm not sure we'll be able to do that, but, um. But no, it's, we're definitely seeing a little bit of uptick of that this year. We are fast-tracking our security upgrades in conjunction with, um, recreation to, uh. To try and elevate all of our security systems around those, uh, those main areas, so we're hoping that will help out.
So if I may, oh, my only concern is, is if, and I appreciate that, but, you know, and I know even, even with. Security systems isn't going to guarantee that we're not still going to get these break-ins. But I guess my question, the reason I ask that, and I appreciate, you know, it's off the cuff question, but, you know. Should we be looking into actual security ro- roaming in these areas? You know, if it's costing us X amount of dollars in thefts and, and everything is, would it be worthwhile potentially to look at? Administration looking at that possibility, at least until, you know, a first-tier system is going to be up. But, you know, because my main concern is, is, I mean, the, the financial costs to citizens. Like that expires on these break-ins and everything that's going on, you know? Because even our local, you know, I mean, I, I realize, but I mean, uh, the agricultural society, the, the local, they, we experienced high theft. You know, right out from underneath their noses at, at an event, you know, generators and things like that. So it's just, you know, it, it, the costs start to add up. So I, I just wanted to, you know, get some insight on that and, you know, if there's anything else that we can do, if you need any direction from council. Or anything, because, you know, this is not going to get better. I guess my other question is, have we made this known to the R C P so that they can, in their patrols, make sure that they are taking spending time in these areas?
Yeah, to the chair, we do file lease reports anytime that we see, we see a theft or anything like that. Um, you know, if, if council would like to. You know, you can certainly provide direction for us to explore some other options and maybe start to gather some of that information. Um, we haven't looked at maybe alternative security options, all of that closely, especially because we do have some. Uh, pretty big security upgrades budgeted for this year. We are going through the procurement process to get those things, so I think that, or our intention is that we are hoping that that would make a pretty big difference, uh, with that new system. And certainly if it doesn't, that might also be a good time that we have to go back to the draft board and maybe make some other considerations. But we have spoke about, you know, uh, more informally, uh, di- different ways that we can look at doing this.
Okay. All right, well, if I may, I'm not prepared to make one of that, but I think we definitely have to monitor it and send when we do get the new system. And if it continues, we have to, I think, explore, you know, what other, what else can we do, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, councillor House, any anything further for the C O report? Right, there's nothing further from committee, we will move to section eight, correspondence and information items. And we do have three, uh, correspondence items, anything we'd love to do with those? Counselor House?
Uh, I'm there to move that you accept correspondence for information.
Thank you, councillor House. Any comments or questions from committee? Okay, so we have the both question, the committee accept the correspondence for information, please vote now. Very good, thank you. Well, that brings us to the end of our open session portion of the meeting, we do have to close session items and accept the motion from committee. Counselor House?
If you move into, move to go on to close session, please.
Okay, we'll move into close session, or sorry, we were called a question, the direction request, the committee move into close session at seven thirty-six P M. If you could please vote now. Thanks, yeah, and that's carrying you there in a split two, if you have anything. Thanks.